Everybody here. Morning, everybody. I'd like to call today's special county council meeting April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five to order, please, at nine thirty. We'll start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. As per five point five of the procedural bylaw, no business other than what is in the agenda may be transacted unless there is a unanimous consent of all members of council. We don't have all members of council here, so if I could get a motion, please, for the approval of the agenda. Councillor Chamzick would like to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
I'd like to propose we move item six to immediately following the approval of the agenda.
I'm sorry that you'd like to move item six to the following approval of the agenda.
Immediately following the approval of the agenda, just because of the it looks like it's the most efficient.
Okay. Is everybody, I'm sure there's no opposition. That should be fine. I should also mention that councillor Chamzick does give her regrets. She will be hopefully arriving. Or Capitania, pardon me. Lord Lipton, Capitani, councillor Capitani will be here hopefully a little later this morning. All right, so we're just going to change the order for six point one to follow two point one, which is the approval of the agenda. Councillor Chamzick put the motion forward to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? Eight and O. Thank you. And if we could then move, please, to six point one, which is a closed session item. Deputy Reeve Minns would like to make the motion to go into close. All those in favor? And no opposed, we're freshly in. Thank you so much. We have come out of our closed session. We have a motion to vote upon, and that motion is from closed session moved by councillor Hall that council recommends to the town and county intermunicipal committee to offer option A for funding as discussed enclosed. And I think we're ready for the question. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, and opposed. One, two, three. That's five and three. That motion carries. Thank you. Alrighty. Thank you, everybody, for that busy morning we've had so far. Um, we are now at our delegation portion of our agenda, which is three point one. And this with regards to the bridge program review from MPA Engineering. We have Tim Edwards here from MPA Engineering presenting. I believe on about two hundred and three bridges in Athabasca County and the significant amount uh that's going to be needed to be repaired or replaced in ten or fifteen years. So we'll start with introductions, and I'll start on my right.
Uh, good morning, Rob Minns, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake Island, Lake Erie.
Good morning, Joe Gerlot, Division One, Rochester, Bay Area.
Good morning, George Bromwell, Division Six, the far north up to foot in the Wander River area, the most beautiful part of the county.
Morning, Camille, Camille Walker, Division Nine, North of the River.
Kelly Chamsik, Division Seven, Grassland at more prosperous areas.
Brian Hall in Division Four.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is the Caslin Boyle area.
Thank you, and I am Tracy Holland. I am the councillor for Division Five, which is east of Athabasca. So Amber Valley, Paxton, Parkview areas, as well as read for the county. Welcome and thank you for being here. I will also introduce Mr. Jordan Schenkelberg. He's with our communications manager. And we have Ms. Leah Blair, who's our reporting secretary. I'm sure you know CAO Beck, Beck already behind you. We have Cole Brennan with our, our press. And we have, of course, you know, Marshall Morton, our infrastructure drafter. And again, if you would like to go ahead and introduce yourself for everybody, that would be great.
Oh, yeah. My name is Tim Edwards. I'm a professional engineer at MPA Engineering, specializing in bridges and rich sized culverts.
Awesome. Well, thank you again for being here. I know this is going to be a hot discussion, so please go ahead with your presentation.
So, thank you, council. We had invited Tim here today to try and give council kind of a snapshot of where our current bridge infrastructure is. As we're working towards our ten year capital plan, we'll be utilizing the BIMs system and the information there to put together a ten year capital for you. Um, but we felt it would be good timing for Tim to come do a presentation on our current infrastructure. And so we've invited him and we're gonna let him do his presentation for you. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask throughout the presentation.
Thank you very much. Floor is yours.
Uh, thanks again for everyone for having me in. I'll move kind of quick. So like Marshall mentioned, please just jump in and ask me a question if you have one. Uh, the presentation is sort of a brief overview of, you know, what, who MPA is and what we've been doing. And we'll run you through some basic bridge uh terminology and stuff. We can kind of all be understanding what we're talking about. And then we'll get into some more details about Athabasca's uh infrastructure from there, some case studies and things like that. So just a brief, brief outline of everything that is kind of just talked about. Uh, so who MPA is, we're a small firm based at a short park with offices in Grand Prairie and Peace River, specializing in in bridge asset, uh, design, maintenance, inspection, um, anything to do with your, your, your standard structures that you're going to see on, on your local roads here, all the way up to highway bridges and the like. Uh, with a focus on municipalities. So we work with a lot of your neighbors and uh, with Lance County, places like that uh throughout the province. Uh, so briefly speaking, when we're talking about bridges, these are the kinds of things that people mostly think about. Uh, and in the province of Alberta, we break them into two groups, um, a major bridge and a standard bridge. Uh, there are significant differences with, with, you know, the services that they offer and the costs associated with them. A standard bridge really is just anything that you can make with drawings produced by Alberta Transportation. Um, the majority of your infrastructure falls into this category. Uh, about two hundred of your structures are, are major, are standard bridges. Uh, and that includes culverts. So culverts of a certain size are considered bridges. Um, anything over one and a half meters in diameter. I can't do that in feet now. I've been engineering too long. Uh, you know, substantial sized culverts. We'll, we'll just leave it at that. Uh, whereas a major is technically anything that doesn't fit into that standard category. So Alpak Bridge is a great example of a, of a major structure. Um, but they can be smaller than that one, too, and still qualify. As long as they're not standard, they're majors. Um, that's really the true definition of it, which is a bit vague maybe, but you kind of know them when you see one usually. Um, so the Alberta uh Transportation or Transportation Economic Corridors now, I guess, uh, founded a system to help inspect all bridges in the province. Um, that's what we refer to as BIM. Uh, and they'll, they essentially allow all any municipality that wants to participate in that program to participate. And, and so far, Athabasca has been participating in that, which I think is a very, very good idea. The BIM system gives a kind of a a standard framework to look at bridges, inspect them, and report on their, their function and their, on their current condition. Uh, there are two types of inspectors, one for majors and one for everything else. And then from there, you can, you start to break down each bridge structure into elements so that the inspector can look at it in a systematic way. So there's things like superstructure and substructure, uh, things like that that get broken out into the system. Uh, we won't talk too much about details like that. What we're really going to focus more on is the numbers that get associated with those elements. Um, it's a, so every BIM inspection rates every bridge element on a scale. Uh, nine is the best, one is the worst. You notice a lot of numbers kind of missing on that, in that table. It's because they all mean various levels of good. Uh, and the ones that get infrastructure people's attention are your twos and your threes. Um, I guess for some context, a rating of one means that the inspector is not leaving the structure. We're not allowing use of that structure. It's imminent danger. We're calling the RCMP. We're blocking the road with our car, things like that. Fairly, fairly uncommon. Um, and then it goes up from there. Two is considered a hazard. So uh, missing bridge rail. Uh, severely deforming timber elements start to get into that two category where concern is quite high and action needs to be taken fairly soon, uh, within six months or so. And then your threes and your fours are more uh maintenance item. Things aren't functioning the way that they should anymore. Uh, and then kind of up from there. We don't talk too much about, like I say, five and nine. They're all just shades of good. And from that, when you rate all these elements uh with a number, you can then do some math with that number. And you get things like a structural condition rating, which is just a snapshot of how good the bridge is uh in terms of its condition. Where you, when you start seeing numbers like fours and threes, that structural condition rating starts to fall to forty-four, thirty-three. It's always a repeating number, just how they do the math, but uh that's when you start to really start to wonder about the future of this bridge. Is, is maintenance appropriate or should we be doing more? Um, so and that's every bridge in your inventory has these numbers on them already. Uh, this is just kind of an overview of what inspections are. So most of your, all your structures get level one on a, on a schedule. Um, we've been doing them at MPA for the last three years, four years, four, four years. Um, and a level one inspection is essentially, well, an inspector with no special tools going out and visually looking at getting his hands on what he can touch, but not using ladders or snoobers to get places he can't reach. Um, whereas a level two, you start to bring in more special equipment. Those are not regularly scheduled. They're more um assigned when the need arises. And that's when you're using more special equipment. So the picture in the, with the uh dark kind of coffee grounds is the result of a level two inspection in which we're actually coring timber elements to get a, a sense of the condition of the wood inside the, the timber parts. Uh, you wouldn't do that on the level one. You would just look at the parts, maybe hit it with a hammer and listen to it, uh, things like that, more basic level of inspection. Uh, the obligation of, of Athabasca County and all municipalities is to maintain safe infrastructure. Level ones on a regular schedule really help you do that. You understand where your bridges are at uh in, in kind of a year to year rolling real time basis. Oh, I guess one thing I, I would point out is uh, level ones on all standard structures are on currently the responsibility of the municipality, whereas level ones and level twos for majors, uh, the province is still paying for those. Not sure how long they're going to continue to pay for them. There seem to be slowing down their schedule for some reason, but uh for now, it's their obligation to, to, to pay for them. So like, again, Alpak Bridges inspected regularly, but it's the purview of the province. So more, um, I guess, specific to Athabasca County. This says two hundred and two. I went through and counted it again yesterday, and we came up with two oh four. Um, I also, when I counted them again, I, I had less standard bridges and a few more major bridges. And I think that was due to a definition change where a certain structure that used to be a standard is now a major. So I think the more up to date totals would be uh eighty-four standard bridges. I believe it's a hundred and nine culverts, but nine majors. But the three majors I got added are, look a lot like standards, um, for what that's worth. Uh, it's a fairly high number of structures relative to your municipal neighbors. Uh, we were just discussing this in the hallway, actually, and I think Clearwater County has less.
Hundred and seventy.
And it is, you know, two to three times the size and area, just for context. Um, another number that stands out there is the number of standard bridges. Um, with Lance County, who was a neighbor of yours, has a few less structures than this, but significantly less bridges. They have more like twenty standard bridges. So it's um it's a, it's a high number of structures and a high number of bridges relative to similar municipalities.
All these bridges are to be replaced. Would they be replaced with another bridge or would they be replaced with a culvert?
It's a fantastic question. Yeah, a lot of them probably would end up being culverts. Um, a lo- a large number of these eighty-seven bridges are single span structures. Doesn't mean automatically that a culvert goes there, but it's not unusual.
But it would be quite a bit less money for a culvert as opposed to a bridge.
The capital costs are much less for, for a culvert, yeah.
Capital costs are less to install a, a bridge culvert, but the funding is also less, right? Like from, from stip funding, culvert to get fifty, fifty percent. Uh, uh, a standard bridge, you get seventy-five percent.
Uh, stip funding covers the bridges the same way. Um, culvert or a bridge is covered seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five? No?
Okay, yeah, it's a, you know, a lower number overall because the structure cost is probably lower, but yeah, it's still the same percentage.
Okay.
There's typically more Nürburgring associated with the culvert. They don't really fund that at seventy-five, right? Or do they?
Yeah, yeah. So gap funding, there was some difference. So the previous funding uh called gap funding was a little different. They, they covered different elements.
Yeah.
Uh, with stip funding, it's essentially, once you have the stip funding, the coverage starts. Uh, you can, so you can retroactively pay for things. Other than that, it covers project costs up to the value of the grant.
Okay.
It's a little easier to use.
But while we're talking about the number of bridges, do you have any advice for us at some point in the presentation about how many of the culvert bridges actually need to be culvert bridges and could be downgraded to multi-row smaller sized, non-culvert culverts, non-bridge culverts?
Um, we don't get into that specifically, but I mean, I can, I can answer your question. I don't have a, a specific number of the number of standard bridges that would be culverts. I mean, generally speaking, uh, what we would do from a design perspective is consider both um, in a, in what we call a preliminary engineering design report. And whichever one is more cost effective, we would select. Uh, when a culvert works, it's almost always more cost effective. Uh, the only time that it gets a little bit more difficult is when you have a very low bridge and you need the size of that opening, they stay bridges, but uh, it's very common. I mean, off the top of my head, seventy percent of them would likely end up as culverts, roughly speaking. Um, I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question?
That, that was basically like, can they be replaced with smaller, something like a one point four meter?
Ah.
Like to get them out of the
Right.
bridge category because of costs and inspections and, and then related to that. How many do we actually? How many do we actually need to replace versus look at them as you know, surplus to requirements and, and route traffic differently?
Oh, yeah, so um, generally, when you are replacing a structure, they tend to get bigger, not smaller. Um, it's more of a reflection of the standards and our tolerance for what have, um, what happens when you get high water, essentially. Uh, they tend, so like when you replace a culvert with a new culvert, it's usually a larger diameter by a size or two. That's, that's what I would say is true in my experience. So it's unlikely that these structures can be brought out of the bridge world by putting in smaller bridges. In terms of evaluating an individual crossing and whether or not you need that, um, it is a difficult engineering question for us to answer. It's such a service based question, like, do you need this road? Where does it go? How important is it to the county? Is, is a little bit more difficult from an engineering perspective. It's, it's uh something uh that your infrastructure people know a lot better than I do. So we can, we could certainly bring that to the table and ask those questions. Uh, I can think of examples where those questions have been asked for sure.
So just to add on to that, um, so it, it's not solely based on fifteen hundred mil for a bridge sized culvert. It, it's about flow. So if you used a combination of twelve hundred millimeter pipes that still had the same flow as the fifteen hundred, it's still a bridge structure. So you can't get away from the bridge structure just by going below fifteen hundred mil in pipe. Uh, it's about how much flow it accommodates. So I'm not sure if that's what you were.
If I could cut in there, uh, many years ago, the director of infrastructure actually started that plan of going out and, and and earmarking, uh, earmarking bridge files that Athabasca County felt that didn't really need to be fifteen hundred culverts and stuff like that.
Okay.
Actually sat down and had many, many meetings with Barhead, the bridge branch, trying to, to come up with a with a, a way of, of declassifying bridge files that we didn't feel were needed in, in, in the county and, and if I remember right, we did a few. But then that it kind of went in a way because there was other bigger things happening. So we, I guess my biggest thing is, is we've, we went down that, that road and uh, it has actually worked, but it's a lot of, it's a lot of meetings from the director to go into, into Barhead and try to, try to figure it out. Maybe they don't even want to talk about it anymore. They, they like the bridge files. They like them numbers for some reason. So, yeah, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, oh, sorry, go ahead. I, I was just, I was just gonna add that, um, some of the lower costs you're going to see when you go down to a smaller bridge is things like inspections. Uh, you're not going to pay someone to go look at these things, uh, but I would actually recommend inspecting all smaller pipes, too. Those do fail and they do cause problems. Harder to inspect. And it's not a supported activity by the province. But uh, as an example, I've had counties put bridge files on structures that don't qualify as bridge size because they want to keep an eye on them as opposed to the opposite. Um, did you have a question? Sorry, Tracy?
Well, actually, I was just in, in thinking about going from the, the current bridge structures to a, a culvert, a bridge culvert. Is the width of the uh driving path able to be adjusted? To change from, you know, an air little bridge, bridge culvert? Can that be changed?
Yeah, I mean, you can put back whatever structure is appropriate for, for that spot. Um, a lot of standard bridges are fairly narrow and have fairly high bridge rails. Agriculture equipment doesn't tend to like them very much. So when we put a culvert in, we provide something called Clear Zone. Um, Clear Zone allows us to be barrier free. Uh, it does make a longer structure usually, but you have no guardrails and you meet all standards. So uh, more pretty agricultural friendly. Unless you can't. Sometimes land is hard to get, things like that prevent you doing what you actually want to do. But uh, for the most part, yeah, you improve the road as you go as well.
Awesome. Thank you very much for that.
Go ahead. Uh, yeah, any, so I guess we'll keep going through, uh, through the project slides. Uh, so this is kind of the, the one that probably grabs people's attention the most. Um, when you take all of the two hundred plus structures and you plot them by the year of their construction, uh, it looks something like the graph on the right. And then you start to, I guess, appreciate the fact that these structures last about fifty years, give or take. Um, there's some outliers on this graph. Uh, nineteen-ten is not a real number. Uh, it is a default number in the BIM system. You, you don't have any bridges from nineteen-ten. You do have bridges from nineteen-thirties and forties. Um, those are real, uh. And in particular, the numbers in the fifth, between fifty-five and sixty-five. Uh, you can see how the graph is quite tall in those areas. Uh, it's just a function of how, when the province built these structures. They built most of them in the fifties and sixties, uh, which is now more than, than fifty years ago in, in a lot of cases. So pre-fifty-five, approximately twenty-four structures, uh, but between fifty-five and sixty-five, there's about seventy-two in your system. So ten year capital plan needs to kind of consider those ninety plus bridges, uh, and what to do with them. So that's going to be the challenge. Um, it does take some management. It does take some commitment. Um, but it's one of those things that the sooner you start, the easier it is. And well, we didn't, we're not going to get into too many details there now, or?
I, it was ironic. He just told council that you have ninety-five bridges you need to replace in the next ten years. Uh, but I mean, there's things we're gonna work. We're, we're working on a plan and, and it'll be, there's things we can do to change that, right? We do know that all the bridges are coming up to their end of their life, and it is a significant number. Can we afford to replace ninety-five bridges in the next five year or ten years? Absolutely not. So we need to come up with a plan of how we're gonna deal with that. So, you know, in conjunction with maintenance plans, we can do some things to these bridges to extend that envelope of life so that, you know, if, if we can push them out five, seven, nine years, some, right? You, we'll be stretching out that, uh, I guess, end of life scenario for each bridge and make it more manageable from a capital perspective. Now that being said, you still have a number of bridges that need capital investments. So that's why we wanted to give you a kind of a snapshot of where we're at. But we don't want to terrify everybody with ninety-five bridges in ten years, because that's not why we're here, but but we do have to do something significant. So anyway, I'll let Tim carry on.
Yeah, we'll get into some of the uh, maintenance things and, and later on in the presentation as well, just to help you get an appreciation of what that means. Um, that, that's, this is sort of the crux of the system conversation is just the number of structures, um, that need some attention in the next ten years. Uh, and that's essentially what this table is trying to summarize as well. So that's that structural condition rating that I mentioned before. The sort of the product of the ratings assigned to in- individual bridge elements. And the number of structures that are drifting towards the lower end of that scale. Um, different way of looking at it, uh, age is one thing, but because of, you know, maintenance and just luck, I suppose, some structures fare better than others. Um, so you end up with about twenty-five percent of the system. Or fifty structures into that thirty three percent structural condition rating. Which uh represents critical elements being rated three or less, uh. Which is in that maintenance kind of zone. Uh, just kind of a very, very brief uh, look at the work that we have been doing, um. I I would say that it's been quite encouraging since starting with Athabasca. Uh, a lot more individual attention's been focused on the bridges, so we're doing all the BIMs, but we're also looking at individual structures with level two coring. Um, we've done some preliminary designs, got several structures replaced. We have other structures that have been designed and tendered and ready to be replaced. Uh, one is currently being replaced, a big one, Collington Bridge, which I'm sure you guys have discussed a few times, uh. And it's it's. We're getting there. That was one I know was uh really important, so I'm glad to see it's progressing. Um, and we've done some repairs, uh. Some of those repairs were proactive in advance of problems and a couple of them have been reactive where. Uh, the condition suddenly changed and we had to go out and do work quickly to get the bridge uh back open. So, uh, this is, this is intended to show you what can happen, just give you an appreciation for what bridge structures do over time. And uh, we kind of highlight what maintenance can be done, uh, what can be done by maintenance, sorry. So this is just typical mechanisms. Some of them are real examples from Athabasca, some of them are not. So this is just a typical thing that happens with culverts. This is from Athabasca. It's one that we just replaced, seven, three, zero, eight, one. I think they call it spine culvert maybe sometimes, explain, sorry. Yeah, and the picture on the right is interesting because that's the inlet where the water is supposed to go and there should be another pipe to the left of it. That no one really ever saw until we dug up the whole thing. We knew it was supposed to be there, but. It's just the nature of this road sloughing over itself that it was difficult to find. Uh, we'll look at that again in a minute. I just wanted to show you. Uh, this is what happens when those culverts get blocked, so you can see the road on the right. Um, flow will still go through the road and when it's not going through the culvert, it takes the road with it. And you end up with failures like you see on the right. Um, and that just progresses from there. Again, these are our real examples. This one is not from Athabasca, thankfully, but um. It's just what happens when culverts don't operate properly. Uh, it tends to look like embankment failures and and slides. Um. I don't think I have an example, uh, the photo I'm. Thinking of seven, seven, four, ten, I'll show later. I think it's not here, but, oh, no, there it is, sorry. So, uh, corrosion is the is and and structural uh, shape changes are how culverts actually fail. So when they are conducting water, uh, this is how they age out essentially. You'll get um corrosion, which you see on the left. This is the. An example of what we refer to as lineal perforations, one of the more severe forms of corrosion that they will. Just kind of naturally accumulate throughout their service life. And then shape changes, uh, which is when they start to look like they're falling down like on the right. Um. That's not seven, seven, four, ten, but it looks a lot like it. Uh, just more, again, more examples of severe corrosion. Not not a lot you can do about some of these structural changes. You can sometimes stabilize with struts, which you see on the left. That's a very common, uh. Way to increase the life of a culvert structure for five to ten years. Um, but with corrosion, yeah. There's not a lot that can be done. It's essentially the end of that culvert service life. Uh, sometimes you can put call concrete floors, things like that, but uh. Once it progresses to these, this state, like you see in these photos, this is just culverts that are at the end of their life. Uh, with bridges, um. This is obviously some worst case scenario photos, but just showing that uh, when timber elements start to get old. And you're not paying attention to them, um. Things can change very quickly. When you're paying close enough attention, these things are exceedingly rare outside of large flood events. But uh, it's just an example of what happens when timber, the timber elements of a bridge. Lose their integrity over time, typically due to rot. Um. They'll show some warning signs before this, which, so if you're paying close attention. You avoid it typically.
If we can, sorry to interrupt, but if we can go back one more uh slide, so the tractor in the water, did that happen in Athabasca County?
No.
Thank you. We have to make that very clear when people look at this, that this did not happen in Athabasca County. Thank you.
I mean, I, in the four years I've been dealing with Athabasca, nothing like this has happened, so, um. Not taking credit, just pointing out that it hasn't happened. Uh, I imagine they got it out. I don't know if it was still any good, but they got it. They. Truly, the most interesting thing to me about the photo on the right, I mean, bridge collapses always have some interest, but um. There's two structures there. Uh, one was an oil field bridge put over top of an existing bridge. Which is not uncommon in Athabasca. There are structures that have been bridged over. Um. It doesn't, it it it's, it is a temporary solution that sometimes gets seen as a bit more permanent than it truly is. It's those structures still rely on the under. The substructure of the bridge underneath it. That is still getting old and still needs some attention to to continue to serve. Uh. I mean, picture on the right could be the Athabasca, but I doubt it. Um. Picture on the left is the uh, Towassanen. Bridge, so calling sorry, Collington Bridge. Um. That we're replacing now, just as an example of something that can happen to bridges regularly, uh. They all accumulate ice flows and accumulate drift and structures can change rapidly again. Um. And that's a, that's just an easy maintenance thing, uh, drift builds up, you gotta take it out. Uh, peer failure. So this is sort of a less extreme example of the bridges that we saw in full collapse where you start to lose. Pure elements and your bridge starts to show you the signs and this is where inspections. Uh, and I'm really at this level, hopefully your residents too, uh, or your operators calling you up and saying, hey, this bridge does not look right. Um. And that allows us to get ahead of it. Uh, this is also the Collington Bridge, so that drift built up on the piers forced water to the north and washed away the bank. Uh, so the picture on the right, that's an abutment, which is the roadside, and it should have a bunch of. Fill in that hole, but also in front of those piles, you can kind of see where the crease of changes color. Those were buried at one point, the colored part was all underground. Um. The head slope. And it has all been washed away and then the fill behind the bridge gets washed away and it's not much of a bridge anymore. It's more of a floating platform. Uh, again, just typical timber. Uh. Failures where piles can break horizontally or vertically. And back walls start to to give way. Timber rots, it starts to crush. Uh, the crushed cap example, that's just what happens when you start to lose integrity through rot. I think that is, I'm printing the bridge file now. Zero, seven, zero, hmm. Three near zero, eight, zero, seven, nine. Um, yeah, I know, it's all in my head. I could picture it on a map, but I can't tell you the name of the road. It is an Athabasca structure, though. Uh, I again, uh, it happens, people notice. Uh, and and actually your maintenance guys flagged it for to to Roy and he called me and we went and inspected it. Um, this is the one just around the corner, um, so I'll also Athabasca, just showing instability of. Of the elements and they stop working properly when they don't align properly. Uh, these pictures are kind of hard to see, but um. Similar to the original bridge photos where timber elements fail and things change quick.
So what used to happen? Uh. Is. Is the uh, back wall would wash out or some darn thing like that and. Everybody would lose their minds and want to repair it. And so they would bring in. Big rock. They figured big rock up against the back wall would be just, it works perfect because then the water that's running underneath. Isn't drawing the big rock or or the sand or the dirt or whatever you put in there. So. So. That got stopped because big rock against the back wall is nothing but a disaster. To to repair after, especially with the frost trying to push it through. And all this other stuff, so that's why some of these back walls look a little rough. I bet you there's that uh, big rock behind them.
So. Well, on the on the fill side of the wall, yes, yeah, I've dug up many old bridges where you find large chunks of concrete and other things you don't want to see behind a back wall.
You find, you find the biggest stuff you can to fill the hole and it's like, it's not proper, you don't, you don't.
Yeah, so. It's it's fair point. I mean, practices, uh, past practices were generally good, but not always consistent. Um. These are more just, so we've looked at the timber a lot. This is just really how the concrete elements deteriorate over time. It's nothing too surprising. It does crack. It does change, um. Tends to escalate quickly once you expose steel, which is kind of what you're seeing on the right, uh. However, these these two. Examples are interesting because you have a lot of these girder types and they're actually quite robust and. Can tolerate a fair bit of this. Uh, bridges do get hit, obviously, and those are more acute maintenance items. It is traffic facing and 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 quite important. Um, I'm not sure I've ever been called for a bridge in Athabasca being hit, which is good. Uh, just more timber examples. I'm realizing how many slides we have here, so I'm just gonna keep going. Uh, so this is sort of the bridge asset management in a nutshell, um. The core of it is always gonna be your inspections, uh, as long as you have your inspections being done, you can feed this. Uh. Management system, good information. And that's critical, um. You then have to complete your repairs and the replacements in tandem, which is uh, what Marshall had mentioned. Uh, before drag out some of these life, service life as long as you can. While replacing the ones that don't make sense to to repair anymore. And to get that right, it takes a bit of planning, um, and if you. Get all that mixed proper, you're gonna have a a a properly maintained, safe public infrastructure. Uh. Uh, this is a kind of a. Difficult to read slide, but it it's intended to give you a very brief appreciation for the. Process that we prefer. This is this is kind of transportation's process. Um. Again, at the the base of this process is the inspections and then you kind of move up in design complexity from there as you move towards things like maintenance and and replacement, which is sort of the top. Right, uh, with the construction. Uh, between there is just a a few things that. Aren't always necessary, but shows kind of every step that the engineers uh, would like to do. And and I think the critical thing here is just the time. Um, it doesn't happen in a week, it doesn't happen in a month, there 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 is a time component and if you're ahead on the. Base elements to the right. You have opportunities to get grants to help cover some of these costs, uh, with. Which we get into a little bit near the end. Uh, and this is a again, just sort of a. Asset management one on one kind of kind of slide where. Uh, there are obvious things that we need to do right now that are easy to do, important to do. And you just got to get them done, um. And those need to be identified and the inspections are great at identifying those. And then everything else. Is is more in into that planning. Uh, range where you're making decisions. Does it make sense to do this thing? Even it seems really important, but it's also very expensive, cannot wait. That's a high urgency, high cost kind of items, uh. So getting your inspections done and again, will inform. This urgency cost paradigm.
So not to pick at your slide, Tim, but um, on the left. Are those two boxes not in the wrong order? At the bottom of the graph, I'm not sure you have low cost and high cost in the same. Let's see, if you go to the left, it's high cost, low urgency and shouldn't.
I think urgency and cost are on the wrong axes, aren't they?
I think those. You know, low urgency, low cost would be the bottom left corner.
I agree.
See low cost. Sorry, hi. Urgency, high cost would be. That'd be low urgency, low urgency, high cost.
Thanks for pointing that out. I, yeah, there there is a, there is a mistake there, um, hopefully the the message is still there, uh. Identifying these low cost, high urgency items are is super important, um. And anything high cost, hopefully we have time to think about it. Um, so yeah, again, just long term planning and why we advocate for it, um. I think the next slide talks about reactive versus proactive and that's sort of. What? How I like to think of these things, um, if you're into the proper long term planning, you are thinking about ten year plans and and and. Allows you to make the the budget allocations that you need to actually solve some of these problems. Before they become. Those high urgency uh, items. Uh, we haven't really done a full system study. We've done some programming and some and some. Organizing of your bridge files, but no real full uh. System wide study. Some some municipalities do it, some some don't, I think. You can manage it either way, um. It's really more about what what you hope to see and get out of your system. So this is this is the the reactive proactive uh. Conversation, so. We have done some reactive management in Athabasca recently, but we've also done some proactive work. Trying to push into that proactive stage, but there is just some of the, some of this deficit that we need to kind of address before we're gonna be fully in in item three. Um, where we're clearing some of the black backlog and addressing threes and fours, we're more focusing on on the twos and threes than than. Some of the less urgent. Um, items. Uh, with. The again, with the inspections feeding the system, we're kind of aware of a lot of the the. More urgent items, but um, we're just not able to address them all quite yet. Uh, that's where STIP can help, uh, so. Our counselor is generally familiar with STIP. Do I talk much about it or? Yeah, okay, good, um, we have got some grants. We're spending some grants right now, so, um. Keep applying as much as possible. Applications are cheap and when you get them, there's a huge upside. So I'm a huge fan, apply a lot. That's the, that's the nutshell. Uh, how much time do you have, Mike, right, John?
Um, but. Want us to wrap up?
So, um, you you're talking about STIP and one of the problems we previously, our councils identified with STIP is. You make the application and then you, by the time you make the application, get approved, do the work. You're another cycle and then your costs go. Are no longer aligned with your application. Do you recommend at all doing the preliminary design and stuff first? Just out of straight up. Fully funded cash so that we can uh, get funding that's more aligned with the bridge costs and when the grant is approved, be be quicker. Quicker to move on the the repair.
Ideally, you've got enough information to have a a solid. Support for your application. Uh, I think on my very difficult to read slide a few slides ago. Um, they cut, the step application is after what we call an assessment. An assessment gives you. Uh, reasonable confidence, wh- whether you should ma- do maintenance or replacement and and if it is replacement. Reasonable confidence in what the structure will look like. It's not as detailed as a preliminary design, so your costs will fluctuate a little bit more. Uh, to me, a STIP application should be done. You know, after an assessment or or after prelim, but after prelim. Um, the timing isn't quite as good. The issue with that is. So you've done a prelim, now you're doing STIP. You have to wait months to get the grant, to get the approval. You've already spent a fair bit of engineering that you're not going to recover as part of your step. And. It's just, it's it's a timeline issue really, whereas if you do it, if you, if you were to do it after an assessment. Now you can pay for your preliminary engineering and replace it the following year still. It's really more of a matter of when, when does the structure get identified and and how far in advance are we working? If you're still in kind of that urgent phase, it's more about just getting the STIP funding period however you can. Uh, and when you're into that more proactive stage, then yeah, you're probably getting assessments and preliminary engineering done in advance. Is that, that was kind of a complicated answer. Is that, is that? Reasonably clear, though?
I think we should be. We should always have at least one bridge structure on the shelf. Designed, ready to go. Um, there are situations where the province will contact us and they're looking for shovel ready projects. If we are one of those municipalities that have a shovel ready project. We get the grant funding. So my suggestion would be that we should always have one shovel ready project on the shelf ready to go.
Much clearer answer from the operations infrastructure guy, I.
So, I guess. I don't know if you want uh, Tim to keep going through, he's. Kind of giving you some insight into where our current. Infrastructure is in relation to our bridges. infrastructure is in relation to our bridges. He does have some case studies here that you can look at on your own, I think, but you know, it, it's pretty evident the county has been doing their uh, asset management of their bridges, but we are behind a bit. Uh, and it needs to be a, a focus area moving forward. Um, so as we start moving into next season's budgets and, um, of course, after election, we'll have a strategic planning session, I'm assuming. And, uh, you know, it, it's one of those items that I, I think you know, should be a priority for all council. Um, without the bridges, we don't we don't have any roads. The roads don't go anywhere without them. So, um, we just wanted to kind of show you where we're at that we're aware of it. We're building and working on plans that will, uh, hopefully provide council with confidence that we can extend the life of some of these uh, bridges until we can afford to do the capital replacement of those. That doesn't mean we can stop replacing bridges, but, uh, you know, it, some of the numbers we're, we're seeing from our assessments is, you know, four to five million a year. That's pretty significant. So anyway, uh, we'll open it up to any questions you might have and, uh, go from there.
I think we're going to start with Deputy Reed Minz and then we have Councilor Gerlock. Were you on the table? Okay, just those two for now.
Just wondering if we're, if we're, we're making plans right now for actual replacement? Do we have an idea like, like the next five bridges that we need to replace or, or or is that still coming or do we have that plan in place?
So one of the things that I've asked MPA for and they're working on is we're, we're doing a ten-year capital plan. We're gonna be building that so that you will see what a real ten-year capital replacement plan will look like. Now that will include um, maintenance. So I'm hoping next week to put out an RFP uh, for a bridge maintenance contract where we would have, bring someone in to do that it specializes in bridge maintenance and that we can work with them to create this uh, envelope, stretch out the envelope of the life expectancy of our bridges. It'll be like a three-way partnership between MPA and us and the contractor and, uh, we'll try and bring these all back online so that we can manage them in a way that you know, is manageable from a budget perspective.
I guess the biggest thing would be okay when you talk about bringing in a contractor. Is that just for specific bridge maintenance or is that just like bringing the contractor to clean the deck? And, and clean underneath and.
No, no, it's only to deal with the so one of our priorities needs to be to try and get rid of the twos, right? The, and threes. So we'll start with those priorities on bridges. And you know, that's the only way we're gonna get to extend the life of these bridges to focus on getting rid of the, the low ratings. So it's, it's not actually have, has anything to do with removing gravel and stuff. It'll be about upgrading components of the bridge.
Okay.
To bring the rating of the bridge up.
Cause we're still gonna have employees going around and doing, doing the, the, the softer maintenance or something like that. Okay.
Yeah, if I, if I could just add to that answer, I, the case study that we're, I won't get into, but, uh, seven, three, zero, one, zero is a really good example of where a maintenance contractor would address this problem. Um, it was a level one inspection, found a crushed cap. Uh, now you have to deal with it. So the first thing we had to do was get a, a procurement process started. Then do the work with, uh, process procurement done already. You just call the guy and you get it done. Which is the goal I think there. And I guess a little more background on the replacement side of things. There are a couple of bridge files that are designed, uh, one of which was tendered last year and will proceed this year and another one that we're struggling with land on, but is designed and ready to go. So we have some in the works for replacement as well.
Thank you, Councilor Gerling.
On the step applications, when they go in, are they just on a year-by-year basis or is there sort of a, a ten-year plan that indicates what our plans are and what's coming due to the ages of the, these bridges? So that it's not, is it just done on an annual basis or is it done on an overall longer term?
Right now it's done annually and oh, my, my take on step is to simply apply for everything that you even kind of dream of replacing at some point in the next ten years. Technically, there is a, a window in which you're supposed to spend the money, but functionally, they tend to roll that window forward. So if they don't really expire in the traditional sense. So once you have it, you have some time to, to use it.
It seems to me if you had a ten-year plan and every year you kept adding one more year to it, so you always have a ten-year rolling plan and you've got your dates and your structures and, and the need to replace them. As opposed to just, uh, oh, an annual application without detailing future plans.
For us internally to have that ten-year plan, we will absolutely have that. And it'll continue to evolve and, and we'll roll it forward and keep applying. They don't
Don't pay attention to.
They don't pay attention to that, right? They only assess, cause they're, they're looking at the priorities that are put forward to them that year, right? So you know, it's a competition, really. See who has the worst bridge. And you know, if you win because you have the worst bridge, I'm not sure you won, but, um, anyway, that, that's the process and of how it works. And so you're in a competition every year with, but for us having all that the ten-year plans in place, absolutely, that'll be beneficial to us as a municipality and, and we'll keep rolling those applications in, right, for the next two or three on the list.
And are there is there, are there possibilities of putting liners in a lot of these big pipes, lining them or do they have to be replaced or?
So, uh, yeah, I mean, liners are still an option. Um, they're more difficult to do now than they used to be. Um, it really depends on the nature of the structure you won't like to line. You often need to think of things like fish, for example. Department of Fishes and Oceans will treat a liner like a new structure because it lasts for fifty years. Uh, if you can't pass fish through the liner, they're not gonna let you do it. So it does have to be evaluated on a case by case. It's something that we still do regularly, but it's not nearly as
How would the fish know the difference whether it's lined or not?
Uh, yeah, it's just about how, how water behaves inside of it.
Thank you, everybody. Does anybody else have any? Go ahead, Councilor Hall.
So this may be more for, uh, the director, the Mr. Evans, but are, are, when you're, when you're looking and making decisions around, uh, bridges, are you just is the assumption to replace like for like, or are we doing an analysis of do we still need this bridge in this location? Is there an alternate traffic route? Can we replace it with something different? Like a single lane versus a big wide double? Or just eliminate it altogether? Like I, I, I think it's a mistake for us to just assume if somebody built one in the thirties, we should just automatically replace it. If we start thinking about making sure we can still flow traffic, but providing that local access.
I, the short answer is yes, we assess those. Um, ultimately, it's gonna come down to most likely political, uh, desire in the end. Um, we have two scenarios right now where you know, the bridges need significant amount of work. And you know, if we one option might be to put in a fairly long culvert and build a mile road and you could get rid of those two bridges. You know, it, it might save a million dollars or it might not. By the time I'm done, the estimates, I don't know, but we are gonna look into it to see if that is a scenario that makes sense. And then, of course, you have to do the consultation with the landowners, right, to see what kind of impacts it have, you know, on them. And then we relay that information to you guys and and you get to make the decision ultimately of you know, who, if there's gonna be a bridge replaced or not. Um, closing bridges is hard. It, it's very difficult and, uh, I don't know, uh, how successful we'll be. Um, I guess that we'll find out, but we do definitely assess alternatives when we're looking at it. We're, we're always looking at alternative bridge structures as well. And this is not something that you can talk to our engineer about because, quite frankly, if it doesn't meet a certain standard, they they can't use it. Uh, but there are scenarios where we can look at alternative bridge structures that might meet our needs uh, depending on traffic volumes and things of that nature.
That's just something we've done in Athabasca. Uh, seven, zero, five, zero, two was a it's still a standard bridge in the sense that the sap components are standard, uh, but it's, it's smaller than a two-lane bridge. Although the standard is two lane. And that was just part of something we looked at because the level of service didn't seem to support the need for a larger structure.
You know, just I guess we, you know, work to live within our means and, uh, maintain this gift of infrastructure that's been provided to us. We need to be thoughtful about meeting future needs and, but also, um, the impact we have on, on future budgets and future councils about building the right product in the right place and maybe putting you know, vehicles are faster and better now. And if you have three bridges in a row over a six-mile span, is it really such a big deal to drive an extra two miles to a better quality bridge and get rid of one of them or like? When we look at the capital cost and, and our job of trying to spread scarce resources over many, many needs, um, I think we have to take a, a more creative approach.
Thank you. So long as we're not landlocking someone, you know, that's definitely the scary part of it.
Re- regarding that, that thought would be we can't put that on the administration. Uh, Director Marshall, there is not gonna say we're gonna remove this bridge and everybody's gonna go around that, that will be a council decision. As, as the Collington Bridge was, we were waiting for step funding, we were waiting for step funding to finally, we said, okay, enough's enough and let's build the bridge. And, uh, that's, that's where that all plays into, in, in, into the whole scheme of things. So so we're not gonna lay that on to, on to our director to say, no, no, we're taking the bridge out and we're not rebuilding it.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson. Oh, sorry.
Great. There, there's, but we would definitely keep make recommendations of you know, what are, what are some of the options for those?
Go ahead, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. Trying to carefully curate my questions so I don't get too operational here. There's currently fifty-three bridge structures that are below adequate. I'm wondering how many bridges are currently closed or have reduced load ratings?
I don't have the number. I'd have to look at the program.
How many STIP applications are you expecting to submit for twenty twenty-six?
For twenty twenty-six? Uh, well, we'll put in that depending on where budget's at, if council's supportive of uh, moving more than one for it, then we would submit multiple based on it, it's no point present, uh, submitting if we don't have the budget in house to match, right? So
And how many shovel re- shovel-ready projects do we currently have on the shelf and ready?
Seven, two.
Two and a half.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, does anybody else have any further comments? Go ahead, please, Councilor.
Ballpark, so fifty bridges that are below standard, just a what's the cost? Like, what's the what's that worth in dollars?
Annually?
Right now.
So the numbers we've looked at it's between four and five million dollars a year capital investment to do for the next ten years or, and you know, half a million dollars of maintenance. So you know, if we increase maintenance, then we might be able to push out some of the capital, right?
So, so is it fair to think on bridges alone, we're, we're looking at sort of a fifty-million-dollar infrastructure deficit?
Oh, absolutely. Or more, that's not I don't think that's an exaggeration at all.
Cause I, I think, you know, we, you know, we talk about a little bit a year, but it's important to get the message to our rate pairs, like what, what's the size of the problem? And the guy sitting behind you probably is curious.
Hey, I forgot about him. Um, sorry. But ninety-five bridges in a ten-year envelope is significant. So I wouldn't be doing my job or if I wasn't here in front of you to explain to you what's going on. And the whole reason we're here is that I have to come up with a maintenance plan to try and make it so that there's not ninety-five bridges in the next ten years. That's gonna take maintenance dollars. So yes, we're gonna need capital, but we're gonna need maintenance dollars as well. And the first step is getting a maintenance contractor in who I know a maintenance contractor sounds like it's in, they can actually do items that they're qualified to build bridges. So they can replace any component of that bridge and help us deal with our low ratings that are twos and threes. And when we get to a situation where we're only dealing with fours, that's where we wanna be. Right? Uh, if we only have fours left, that's where we wanna be.
Thank you. So everybody awesome. Well, I know, um, thank you very much for the presentation and the information you brought forward. I am extremely thankful for this conversation. It's one that, um, again, as, as we, or Councilor Hall just mentioned, the public, I really need to understand what's, what's happening, you know, in the county with our infrastructure and, and bridges isn't our only infrastructure that we have to consider. And when I looked at, um, the overall health on page fourteen, um, as, as Councilor Anderson mentioned, fifty-three below adequate, fifty poor and one very poor, um, half the bridge infrastructure needs our immediate focus. Um, which of course you're, you're on and I, I get that. You're, you're, you're at it. You're, you're making it happen. But the other half, as you know, um, we have to do the main maintenance. So, um, it is a huge fiscal hit, um, to the county and, um, one that we will hopefully be managed over the next ten to fifteen years, if we can extend that out a little bit. And that it's not interrupted by a changeover in staff and council, because that also creates that halt and, and those gaps that, that, uh, push us further down, um, further away from the finish line. So once again, thank you very much for being here today and for explaining everything to us. And I'm quite sure if anybody else has further questions that they know who to reach out to and, and get those answered. So I appreciate you being here today. Thank you so much.
Thanks for having me.
You take good care. We take, please, a, a recess for about, let's take ten minutes. Absolutely. Please and thank you. Come back. Oh, man. All right. We'll reconvene here this morning. Uh, we just finished our, uh, bridge program delegation, uh, presentation. We are on to four point one of our agenda, water and sewer charges, page forty-nine to fifty-four of your package. Um, we have a recommendation here, of course, to go through, uh, to give first reading, second reading, uh, possibly third reading of bylaw zero zero nine, twenty twenty-five. Um, is there anybody, Counselor Minz?
I would, I would move that recommendation, uh, with an amendment to the Collington Hamlet charge of instead of four twenty-four cubic meter for the first five, five cubes to go with a two thirteen a cubic meter for the first five cubic meters for the for that for that levy, that improvement levy that that, uh, that way it's just straightforward. After five cubic meters in Collington goes to a six dollar uh, cubic meter thereafter.
Thank you. So if everybody understands, um, what that means, we have the improvement levy in Collington, um, that is a forgiveness of nineteen thirty, nineteen dollars and thirty-three cents. So to, um, as we did on our prior bylaw, we had that situation that was, uh, again, exactly that, we had a forgiveness of nineteen thirty-three a month. Once that forgiveness was reached in their minimum cubes, then it went to the regular price everyone else um, along, uh, has paid. So I, uh, I'm in support of that amendment as well. I wrote down the same thing, two thirteen for the first five cubic meters and six cubic meters thereafter over the five cubic meters for Collington. Um, and everything else on the bylaw for me looks fantastic. When I look at, when I look, did a little bit of, um, savings, what that looks like from our current rate to what the six dollar cube rate, um, would look like. Collington would save thirty-five eighty-nine a month. Grassland would save thirty, this is based on average, by the way, the average cubes. Uh, Collington would save thirty-five eighty-nine a month, Grassland would save thirty-two sixty per month, and Wandering River would save forty-two thirty-eight per month. Um, which is exactly, I think, the goal that we were trying to accomplish here, uh, considering the amount of surplus that we were realizing from the, uh, current rate. Is there? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Um, in our committee of the whole agenda, under this scenario, it said that we would be expecting a deficit of two hundred and ninety-two thousand approximately for the upcoming year. I'm just wondering what the deficit, the additional deficit to wastewater would be. I didn't see that calculated. If I missed it? And further, um, what budget line will this be cut from? Because we're not, the motion doesn't include to amend the budget, so what budget line would we be taking this out of?
Um, I guess that that would be a consideration of general taxation and it would be in the water budget, so we would be looking at same as we do with every other budget. This is just for me, top thinking off the top of my head, but every other budget shows whether it's a deficit, which most of our services do. Um, so we would show it there and then the the shortfall for revenue would come from general taxation.
But as follow-up, you're not making a motion to amend the water budget. So because that's not being done, what line item is this being taken from?
Well, I guess when I consider looking at this today, we are having a interim budget that we are going to be discussing shortly after. Um, and that conversation can definitely be taking place because I think we all knew as we used to have. A three-year average was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit. So those shortfalls in the revenue always came from general taxation. So it's either that or we look into, we can look in other items, but those that that's a conversation that's yet to come here this morning. Anybody else?
Counselor Hall?
Um, I'm not comfortable with subsidizing water as heavily as we are. Um, currently, we are paying for all the capital out of general taxation, so the taxpayers are paying for the water lines already because we're not charging it out in the water rate. Um, I don't think it's fair to, a lot of our residents don't that don't have access to water or have to go to town to haul water because there isn't an economical choice for them to go anywhere else. So I don't think it's fair to be putting this back on the general taxation as we are already paying the capital out of general taxation.
Thank you. If I just might comment, um, when it comes to capital projects, those are eligible for grant funding. Um, when we look at all wells, um, dugouts, all of those type of agricultural needs, this county has been, um, gifted, I guess you could say, many grants to make those things happen. Every single one of our services, uh, over thirty-five plus services that we have are, um, subsidized and I'll currently, I'll just say currently costs of, uh, providing goods and services in Athabasca County are funded publicly through general taxation and in some cases combining user fees to help recover costs of providing specific goods, except for potable water. That's current. That's a basic human right and a requirement for life. Potable water is currently under a user pay model, uh, which we have seen actually turn into a profit of plus five hundred thousand. Um, so any capital projects that have been mentioned in this report are definitely covered uh, through that. However, since the implementation of the user pay model, it has also created issues of affordability for many residents, which for me is simply unacceptable. Um, we, as we do with the multiplex is a perfect example. Not everyone uses the multiplex or has access to it. Um, it's with every service that we offer. It's some pick, some can take advantage of it, some can't. But this is water and water is from corner to corner of our county, something that is a a human right and an absolute need that not only benefits, uh, economic development, agricultural development, personal use, everyone has access to it. So, um, I guess that's where I I kind of beg to differ.
So are we gonna start subsidizing people that can't haul? Like, say, north of town, they have to go to town to get water. Are we subsidizing their water, but they're hauling from town? And secondly, are we subsidizing people with wells that have to pay for softeners and distillers and whatnot to actually drink the water out there, right? So that's that's where I struggle with this. I don't need a response back, but that's just what I.
Well, just quick follow-up, um, anyone who hauls water would not actually be subsidized anyway through the rate, um, as we've discussed. And with regards to wells, um, those of all, um, most of wells around this area have received grant funding. So it's it's exact, that is very true. If you actually go back and look through it.
We, um, we have started actually helping uh, county residents out with with actually building the infrastructure. Hopefully that'll happen here really soon, startup. And, uh, we are doing waterline studies to the south. Now, we're doing waterline studies from from, uh, Boyle to to Caslan, maybe to hopefully help people out there. Our, we have had, uh, discussions with another municipality to the north about possibly trying to cross the river and 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 head water across the river, so. For many years, I've hauled water and and, uh, out west of Athabasca, and I've seen my neighbors haul water north. I've seen my neighbors haul water east and north. And, yeah, we could all go down and buy it cheaper in Collington, cause that's the, that's the closest, uh, fill station for potable water. Um, and we've always had to haul from town. So this is why we started this initiative, thank goodness, with help from our our neighbors of the summer villages to get a water for life grant to go west. So it's starting. Uh, this is not a subsidy to to, this is a subsidy no different than than than, uh, subsidy for dust control. Really no dip, uh, no different than a subsidy for for people's taxes going into paying for for gravel that that don't even live along a gravel road. They never see a speck of gravel, but they have to, their taxes go to it. So it's it's like, I don't know, I I don't understand why we wanna, we wanna gouge one entity or or not gouge, why we wanna actually make somebody pay for that we that we don't wanna subsidize or help people pay for a certain item when when we're helping many items be be subsidized for. Let's go back to the dust control. All of a sudden, we've added on more dust control, so. So it's like, and and that's a a true subsidy there, huge subsidy. So there's some people that need dust control, there's some people that don't, but we pay for it. So water, I don't understand it.
Thank you. Um, and I agree, it's all about affordability and that's how we manage to get the services that we do to people is through subsidy and it makes those services affordable. Um, and for me, um, water is one of the most important. It's it's not a service, it's it's a basic human right, we need to live. So for me, it's irresponsible not to treat water as we do every other service.
Um, with that, Counselor Hall?
I think, I I mean, I generally withheld a lot of comments on this issue, but you know, I know we're gonna start voting on first reading and I I'm not under any illusions about where this may or may not go, but I I do have a couple of comments I wanna share, I mean, before that happens, cause I think, I mean, it's clearly apparent to me that the discussion on the council table over the past many months, we have been generally concerned about improving affordability for county-provided water service to our residents while being competitive on on a more regional level regarding the price of bulk water. We've done other things to improve, um, planning for the future needs and expenses, and we we only need to think about, you know, the, uh, reserve fund for the evergreening of emergency services equipment or gravel, pit reclamation as examples. And I think it's important in this discussion and as we think about how we deal with water, that we consider what funds we do set aside on an annual basis, whether it's from general taxation or water sales for the future renewal of the water system. And to to do that really aligns with our guiding principles or the values we talk about that determine how we operate, both in our public-facing and internal operations. Planning for the future helps ensure that that's sustainable. And I know there's, you know, plenty of variations of water pricing that we could talk about or use. I I'm worried that we focused really on only one specific option without having a meaningful discussion of various alternatives or how we've even aligned what we've picked with our strategic plan. And that for me is one of the 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 big questions here. And I know, you know, taking advice into account, at least the best advice we had available to us and notwithstanding what I think still were everyone's best effort, it's clear that council missed the mark on our current water rate bylaw. We're we're off track on that and I'm in agreement with what I think is most people at the table that we need to approve, improve the pricing on domestic water. that we need to approve, improve the pricing on domestic water for our residents and basically make domestic water more affordable for people that live here. But I think we all have all kind of along the way also acknowledged that water can be used as an influence on economic activity. Local competitiveness for the businesses that operate within the county and we've, we've had presentations about businesses feeling uncompetitive and the price of water impacts affordability of living here and doing business here and it's important that we get it right. I, I do feel like and believe that the pursuit of a flat rate system is, is a little too short in focus and a bit of a mistake. I'm disappointed that we haven't taken more time to consider how we can align that with our strategic plan and our goals. Because I think one of the decisions council needs to choose is the extent to which we're prepared to ask ratepayers to subsidize industry, non-residential users, commercial users, and really importantly, how much are we prepared to subsidize users from outside of the county? What burden should be placed on all ratepayers to fund that water service generally and more specifically those non-residential and non-resident users? I think it's important and I don't know if we really got this, but there, there, we've got to be, remember that the county is not the water service provider. We've heard a comment today already from many residents who haul water and that purchase water from the town or even the village of Boyle. So even our discounted rates are not reasonably or economically available to our residents. So we're, we're doing something that affects some in terms of the affordability, but not actually all. And one of those pillars we identified in the strategic plan was about strengthening our economy and I think this is important for us to do and we can do this by establishing, um, ensuring our utilities are affordable and ensuring that they're affordable for residents and the businesses to do, that, that are here. But I also think we have to balance that and with maintaining an affordable property tax regime because necessarily all subsidies are ta- transferred to general taxation. We've talked about integrity and specifically as a council, it will provide transparency, fairness, accountability, and I, I think it's important, the decisions we make regarding water are fair to users and non-users. Because every one of those people will subsidize a service in some way, just like all other services. But accountability to me also means being able to tie the decisions made on water rates to our strategic objectives with a clear understanding of the budget implications and I am not clear on why we're at six, except that it was the lowest one we saw in the package. Uh, the alt, I feel like we, I think we can challenge ourselves to do better for residents. I'm also concerned that we're considering a rate that has no upper limit on the potential loss or subsidy. And it's difficult to find alignment for me with the strategic plan on that. I think we have to do better for residents and business, but I think we can do it in a way that puts some guardrails up, to use a, maybe a bridge term. So how we remain accountable to the resources entrusted without, uh, talking about that degree of subsidy is, uh, is a, is a challenge for me. And really, should we be subsidizing residents from other municipalities? And taking to ti- the time to make those future focused decisions now will avoid change for our system users and provide predictability for the residents and our ratepayers. I think it's a really important, we, we slow down just a touch and put in place a thoughtful plan that will be predictable and consistent when the water line comes in. Instead of needing to make changes again in twelve months. And so I, you know, to quote a colleague at the table, we, we have to do the best we can to make sure everyone's treated fairly and we're fiscally responsible. And I really believe the flat rate system proposed today is neither fiscally responsible or fair. I think we have better options. And I'm just hopeful that we have the courage to slow down and explore them. And so I would also like to propose an amendment to the bylaw that would reflect rather a rate of four dollars per cubic meter and Ms. Blair, I have this written down, I'll just give it to you. That would reflect a rate of four dollars per cubic meter on the first ten meters per month for residents, six dollars per cubic meter for non-residential users on the first fifty and a rate of seven ninety-five on all volumes in excess of that base amount per month. That the, there would be then no minimum charge, which we've talked about being a problem in the past. And then of course, we would need to adjust the rate in Collington to reflect the impact to the local improvement levy.
Can I get that repeated, please?
Um, if.
I'm gonna give this to Ms. Blair.
Okay, so that, that would be the second amendment.
Yeah.
So there will be no further amendments, just to, just to make mention. Um.
So, um, just to repeat it for, because I probably said it too quickly. I, I propose we make an amendment to the bylaw to reflect a rate of four dollars per cubic meter on the first ten cubic meters per month for residential users. A rate of six dollars per cubic meter for non-residential users on the first fifty cubic meters per month. And a rate of seven ninety-five per cubic meter on all volumes in excess of that base amount per month and that there be no minimum charge. Further, that the rate in Collington be adjusted by administration to reflect the impact of the local improvement levy. And I just, I didn't calculate that because I didn't, couldn't remember the number.
Thank you. Um, I'm not even going to try and read that over, uh, Councilor Cromwell. Um, did you want to?
Thank you. Um. Interesting information being put out, but also things that we have to be, you know, that we have to consider here. We're talking about subsidizing non, on county residents. We're talking about how we wanna promote economical development. And yet we just talked about a multiplex where we are supplementing users from outside our municipality, but there's no issue with that. So I think we need to take a, a step back and actually look at what is accurate and what is an opinion and how that can be, be looked at across the board for equality. It's very clear that uh, some changes are not, well, appearing not to be, be welcome across the board. But other ones are okay. And I think that that is doing a disservice to our ratepayer, to our community. One of the, we, we've talked about this at length around the room. What do people care about? They care about roads. They care about water. They care about safety and security. How much do we actually provide to our ratepayer? We talked about residents that pay for gravel through taxation but have no gravel nearby. We talked about people that pay for school fees and have no children or never have. We talk about users that pay for a multiplex in Athabasca that never travel that way, that are closer to Westlock, closer to Lacklubish, uh, and that use them in other municipalities. Why are we tunnel visually, tunnel visioning on one? Uh, to promote our opinion over looking at it as a whole. We have the duty and the ability to make water affordable. Water is life. The idea that we are going to hold back on, on people having the ability to afford water and then take the burden off other utilities, other bits of, of rising inflation is ludicrous. We have a, a way to make it move forward and there's no need to, to posture and to pretend that this is not beneficial for our ratepayer.
Thank you, Councilor Minz.
I would like to get clarification on what, uh, what ratepayers from other municipalities is, uh, Councilor Hall talking about? What, what ratepayers from other municipalities are you reflecting this to?
I think we all know that summer villages are part of it, uh, Lacklubish County. I mean, if we get down to the right price for non-resident users, we, it could be economical for people to drive in from the east of Lacklubish County to fill a grassland even. But certainly, um, we have, uh, eight summer villages in the county that many of whom haul water and if they're hauling them on, uh, if they're hauling water at six bucks, the reality is we're subsidizing that rate, we're subsidizing out of county water and I, I think we have options to provide a better deal for our residents and I think we have the ability to differentiate and and I, I mean, I, I don't wanna get into a cross-table debate. I, I think we all know that there, there are people who are not Athabasca County residents that fill up at our truck fields and industry that hauls water out of the county.
I'm, uh, to, to follow up with that, I'm pretty sure that people from, from Lacklubish County is not, are not coming into grassland to take on water at nine dollars a cube when they can actually get water for about a dollar forty-five a cube.
It's eight forty-five.
That's for non, non-rent. Why would a Lackl- Lacklubish County person come in to Boyle to buy water at nine dollars a cube? When they can get water for a dollar forty-five a cube. And we are having discussions right now and we're, 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 we're working together with the municipalities, six of them to the, to the west of us. And, and with the idea that, that we might end up keeping this water line. And our discussion here right now is geez, maybe we can claw a whole bunch of money back from, I, I, I just don't understand this idea of, of, uh, of, of saying that, that we can change our water rates to advantageously grab more money from outside residents. It's, it's, I don't know, I, I just, I just can't even fathom even having that discussion right now. As we're trying to work together with the people that were saying that we're gonna, that we can do this. I don't even wanna have that discussion. I don't understand it.
Thank you. Um, I think Councilor Cromwell and then Councilor Gerlock and we're gonna start wrapping it up, folks, because we have talked about this for over two years. Um, and we all pretty know where we sit with regards to this and we keep repeating the same thing over and over in every meeting, but go ahead, Councilor Cromwell.
You know what? Everything I've said, I think them said, and enough with the, the waiting. Get it done.
Thank you, Councilor Gerlock.
So much of this are mixed messages. It's, it's one thing. The more water we use, the better the rate. So then the next thing we do is try to discourage water use. Uh, to, to, to what end? I don't know. But if you take all of the taxes that are paid on farmland and residential, it covers the cost of administration and legislation and not a whole heck of a lot more. So basically the money that's coming to subsidize or to, to fund programs is coming from our industrial tax base. And I don't think we should differentiate and say we, they should be paying more because they're the ones that are paying for it anyway. I think every drop of water that's, that is produced in this county should be sold for the same price in the town, in the village or whatever, at a cost price. We should be as efficient and effective as we can be. And then you can put so much, so many percent on to cover the, the costs and whatever, but we're making this thing so complicated and it basically is pretty simple. I, we don't wanna discourage use of water. I'm, I'm frustrated.
I think where a few of us are. Thank you, Councilor Gerlock. Go ahead, Councilor Cromwell, last time.
Thank you. I did remember what I wanted to say. Uh, looking at the amendment that Mr. Hall put up there, the one thing that I wanna note is for our non-residents. Now I'm assuming that will mean commercial. And how does a water hauler fit into that would be my one question. So you have some residents that are gonna get a better deal than others depending on when they fill up. Uh, we're making it more convoluted. We're adding more problems. We're not fixing them and I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you for coming back to me.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I, I think with regards to the second amendment, um, just saying I'm not in support. Um, for me, having affordable quality water for all in our municipality benefits every corner of it. It welcomes residents, businesses and visitors alike. And as far as our strategic plan, uh, vision, mission and values, it speaks to just that. With a focus on real life in a place that people are proud to call home. And for me, being proud to call home is making sure that we're looking after everyone within it. So I think we'll start with the second amendment now. I think we've.
Could I have a word? Everybody's had two shots at this.
Everybody, we've been around several.
I've spoken once on this, so I'd like to clarify two things. Dust control and gravel production or application are not applied outside the county. We don't apply it in the summer villages to their residents for discounted rates. I think we need to be careful about how we model the arguments. Now, it's fine to disagree with the amendment. It's, this is why we have these things at the table. Vote against it and we'll move on. But I'm suggesting to you that we have the ability to offer our residents a really reasonable deal to make it affordable. And I do agree that uniform rates would be great across the region. I would love to see that, but that's not the question in front of us and it's not something sadly that we have the ability to control today. And I hope we get there too.
Thank you. So on the, uh, second amendment, oh, pardon me, go ahead.
I'd like to request a recorded vote, please.
Thank you. Recorded vote it is. Um, Ms. Leah, are you able to read back, please, the second amendment proposed by Councilor Hall?
Moved by Councilor Hall to amend the motion that bylaw zero zero nine two thousand twenty-five be given first reading as amended as follows. To reflect a rate of four dollars per cubic meter for the first ten cubic meters per month for residential users and a rate of six dollars per cubic meter for non-residential users for the first fifty cubic meters per month and a rate of seven dollars and ninety-five cents per cubic meter on all volumes in excess of the base amount per month and that there be no minimum charge. And further, that the rate in Collington be adjusted to reflect the impact of the local improvement levy.
Thank you. Um, the motion is on the table. It's sorry. Um, I think at this point, and is there something compelling that needs to be added?
Well, I just got thinking there. So if we're gonna start, uh, segregating different rates out and everything, can we even do that? Can we even segregate different rates out like, like at the truck fields? Can we? Can we, uh, charge different at the, at the truck fields?
Madam Chairman, yeah, our report indicates that once we've got new software in, we will be able to differentiate rates far better than we can today.
But once we get new software and that software isn't it, so if this bylaw is passed today, could we actually do that?
Uh, it would be difficult.
Right. So my, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor.
Just for clarification, uh, when are we expecting the new software? Like, I know we're planning on it this year, but just, are we expecting it? Soon? Is it by fall? Kind of?
Yeah, I just signed the purchase order for it yesterday, so, um, uh, I think our operator was hoping, hoping by the end of June, so give a little bit of leeway. It might be into July.
Thank you. And in which case as well, um, we would assume that we'll be looking at an annual review. We're halfway through the year, so um, this will obviously be coming back, um, for the, uh, revision of the bylaw, um, again. Now, if we can go forward, please, with all the information I think everybody has on the second amendment, um, that Councilor Hall has proposed, it has been read. Does everybody understand it? All those in favor of the second amendment? And it's a recorded vote. So Council, Council Capitania, Council Wallet, Council Hall and Council Anderson and all of those opposed. Council Cromwell, Council Gerlock, Council Minz, Council Holland and Council Chamsick. That amendment fails. On the first amendment, um, I'll read it again. I believe it was for, uh, the bylaw remains the same minus the Col- uh, Collington Hamlet. For the first five cubic meters would be two dollars thirteen cents and six dollars per cubic meter thereafter over five cubic meters. Everyone understands that particular amendment? All right, if we're ready for the vote and it be recorded vote. As I've requested it, I've requested a recorded vote. Okay. On this amendment, all those in favor. We have Council Cromwell, Council Capitany, Council Minz, Council Holland, Council Chamsick, Council Hall, Council Anderson and all those opposed, Council Wallach and Council Gerlock. Okay. That amendment passes. So we, now we'll move to giving first reading of bylaw zero zero nine two zero two five as amended. Council Minz would like to propose that we give first reading of bylaw zero zero nine twenty twenty-five as amended. We're all ready for that?
Assume this is a recorded vote.
We'll record every one of these votes today for this, for this particular item.
And I, it's when requested, madam. It's not assumed.
Okay.
Can I, can I, uh, now that the main motion is back on the table, ask administration, um, so we've got a date on the bylaw that it's, you know, if, upon effect of the third reading. Is that, um, reasonable and convenient and is that something that, um, like are you better to align the price change with the billing cycle or the beginning of the month or something like that so that we can think about that before we get to second reading?
Madam Chair, we'd have to look into that. I, I don't know. It probably should align with the end of the month. Yeah. Otherwise we'd have split utility rates, um, at some point. Yeah. I mean, the, the truck fields are one thing, but the, uh, account holders in Hamlets are another, or any day count holders.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So on the first reading, Council Wallach.
So can we actually get clarity before we pass this or start working on this? Like, can we get a report back for the next? So can we actually get clarity before we pass this or start working on this? Like, can we get a report back for the next meeting?
We'll do whatever. Madam Chair, we'll do whatever council wants.
Oh, yeah, I would recommend for me personally, it would be a change for May first, but um that would be, of course, again, for council to decide. First reading, if we're ready to go. First reading to give to give first reading of bylaw zero zero nine twenty twenty five as amended, all those in favor. Recorded vote, we have Counselor Cromwell, Counselor Minz, Counselor Holland, Counselor Chamsick, and those opposed. First reading fails. That was Counselor Gerlock, Counselor Capitani, Counselor Wallach, Counselor Hall, and Counselor Ashton, Counselor Ashton Anderson. Sorry, going around. All right. Pardon me. There we go. So I think we can break for lunch at this time, folks, and we will take thirty minutes, please.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair. Before you move on. As we're still on four point one.
We're good, go ahead please.
I have another motion that I would like to make, please.
Okay, I'm gonna prepare to write it, I'm ready.
To recommend to give first reading of bylaw zero zero nine two thousand and five. As presented in schedule A of our package without any modifications or edit.
Okay. Thank you.
Isn't that a reconsideration?
No, because it's a different motion.
It is a different motion. It says presented in schedule A.
And we've done that every time we've talked about water. When the motion has failed, we've had the ability to bring in other motions that. That are different. And I do not believe that would count as a reconsideration as it's a different motion.
I agree.
I would also argue that that's a reconsideration as. The way that it was treated was that councillor Minns had moved first reading. And then made an amendment. And then there was a second amendment. That's how it was voted on and that's how it was treated and therefore this would be a reconsideration.
I believe the amendment, the the final motion that councillor Minns made included the amendment. So. I guess I would ask for. A ray in on this one because as far as I understand it to be. The original motion was as amended.
You can't make it and. Another motion after the. You need a motion on the floor before you can make an amendment to begin with. So that doesn't actually work.
Okay.
So. Madam Chair, the way that. I recorded it as and. As Haslia is that. You amended the bylaw before you gave it first reading. So you made an amendment. And then and you voted on it, then it was presented for first reading as amended. And then you voted on on that.
So this wouldn't be a reconsideration what councillor Cromwell is proposing?
It's not reconsidering the same motion, that would be my.
That's my.
You're not reconsidering the exact same scenario.
Exactly, that's that's exactly where I'm sitting as well.
It's a matter of interpretation, but.
Yeah, my interpretation as well.
I believe we voted three times. The original.
Because.
And two amendments.
No, we didn't vote on the original motion, we voted on amendments, two amendments and then the amended reading. That's how I understand it, what was just so told to us. Because if we would have voted on the first reading, we wouldn't have had to have any of the amendments. All right.
When we did this before, the amendments were failing, it wasn't the actual bylaw. So that's where it's different, we did vote on the amendments, correct, but we voted to vote down the bylaw. It doesn't matter if it was amended because it was voted on as the bylaw. So when we did this before and all those amendments failed, we weren't voting on the bylaw. It was on the amendments.
The actual first reading. Of the bylaw as amended was what failed. Councillor Cromwell is asking for is the first to give first reading of the bylaw as presented.
We failed the first reading.
Of the amended bylaw. It does because he's asking for, well, and again, I I understand it to be that he and I could be wrong, but I understand it to be that he is asking for this bylaw. Not to be amended, but as presented. And what we voted down was an amendment. Pardon me? I'm I'm sorry. We couldn't do the amendments because the amendments would have to be reconsidered, we voted on the amendments, they would have to be reconsidered. You can make new amendments. You could definitely make new amendments. So I believe where we're going with this is for as councillor Cromwell mentioned to give first reading of the bylaw. Zero zero nine two zero five as presented. And the amended bylaw failed.
Correct.
Okay.
I'd like a recorded vote.
Thank you. Are we going to have conversation or discussion, would anybody like to discuss? Before we go to give first reading of bylaw zero zero nine twenty twenty five as presented in schedule A of our package? All right, we're ready to take that to the question. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, so that's councillor Cromwell, councillor Gerlock, councillor Minns, councillor Holland and councillor Chamzick. Any opposed? Councillor Capitania, councillor Ashton, Astrid, Constable, geez, I can't, I don't know why I have, I had time with this, councillor Anderson and councillor Wallack. The first reading passes.
I'll move second read.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Minns would like to move second reading of bylaw zero zero nine twenty twenty five as presented in schedule A of the package. Recorded vote, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Yeah, recorded vote is requested by councillor Minns. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Councillor Cromwell, councillor Gerlock, councillor Minns, councillor Holland, councillor Chamzick. All those opposed? Councillor Anderson, councillor Wallack and councillor Capitanic. I will put it out there, I know where it's gonna go. Is there unanimous consent for third reading? All those in favor for third reading? It's not got unanimous consent, so we will stop there. Thank you. I believe we are moving on to five point one, page fifty five of your package. And this is the twenty twenty five budget and tax rate scenarios. I'm just gonna start to just mention to say to urge all residents who are listening and everybody out there, please read this report and I'll turn it over to administration to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm with the council, I am joined by my colleagues and the finance department and we're presenting today to you some tax scenarios and also some adjustments made to the budget, so. If council is okay, do you prefer to start with the budget and we can walk you through some of the changes? I mean, obviously you need to know what your twenty twenty five budget looks like before you take a look at any scenarios, so if you have any questions, I believe there was a handout. We can go through it line by line if you prefer, or we can highlight any areas where you have some questions.
Okay, where does it, go ahead councillor Anderson, where would you like to go?
As this wasn't provided.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair. Before you move on. As we're still on four point one.
We're good, go ahead please.
I have another motion that I would like to make, please.
Okay, I'm gonna prepare to write it, I'm ready.
To recommend to give first reading of bylaw zero zero nine two thousand and five. As presented in Schedule A of our package without any modifications or edit.
Okay. Thank you.
Isn't that a reconsideration?
No, because it's a different motion.
It is a different motion. It says presented in Schedule A.
And we've done that every time we've talked about water. When the motion has failed, we've had the ability to bring in other motions that. That are different. And I do not believe that would count as a reconsideration as it's a different motion.
I agree.
I would also argue that that's a reconsideration as. The way that it was treated was that Counselor Minz had moved first reading. And then made an amendment. And then there was a second amendment. That's how it was voted on and that's how it was treated and therefore this would be a reconsideration.
I believe the amendment, the the final motion that Counselor Minz made included the amendment. So. I guess I would ask for. A ray in on this one because as far as I understand it to be. The original motion was as amended.
You can't make it and. Another motion after the. You need a motion on the floor before you can make an amendment to begin with. So that doesn't actually work.
Okay.
So. Madam Chair, the way that. I recorded it as and. As Haslia is that. You amended the bylaw before you gave it first reading. So you made an amendment. And then and you voted on it, then it was presented for first reading as amended. And then you voted on on that.
So this wouldn't be a reconsideration what Counselor Cromwell is proposing?
It's not reconsidering the same motion, I that would be my.
That's my.
You're not reconsidering the exact same scenario.
That's that's exactly where I'm sitting as well.
It's a matter of interpretation, but.
Yeah, my interpretation as well.
I believe we voted three times. The original.
Because because.
And two amendments.
No, we didn't vote on the original motion, we voted on amendments, two amendments and then the amended reading. That's how I understand it, what was just so told to us. Because if we would have voted on the first reading, we wouldn't have had to have any of the amendments. Alright.
When we did this before, the amendments were failing, it wasn't the actual bylaw. So that's where it's different, we did vote on the amendments, correct, but we voted to vote down the bylaw. It doesn't matter if it was amended because it was voted on as the bylaw. So when we did this before and all those amendments failed, we weren't voting on the bylaw. It was on the amendments.
The actual first reading. Of the bylaw as amended was what failed. Counselor Cromwell is asking for is the first to give first reading of the bylaw as presented.
We failed the first reading.
Of the amended by. Of the amended by.
Of the amended.
It doesn't matter if it was amended.
It does because he's asking for. Well, and again, I I understand it to be that he and I could be wrong, but I understand it to be that he is asking for this bylaw. Not to be amended, but as presented. And what we voted down was an amendment. Pardon me? I'm I'm sorry. We couldn't do the amendments because the amendments would have to be reconsidered, we voted on the amendments, they would have to be reconsidered. You can make new amendments. You could definitely make new amendments. So I believe where we're going with this is for as Counselor Cromwell mentioned to give first reading of the bylaw. Zero zero nine two zero five as presented. And the amended bylaw failed.
Correct.
Okay.
I'd like a recorded vote.
Thank you. Are we going to have conversation or discussion, would anybody like to discuss? Before we go to give first reading of bylaw zero zero nine twenty twenty five as presented in Schedule A of our package? Alright, we're ready to take that to the question. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, so that's Counselor Cromwell, Counselor Gerlock, Counselor Minz, Counselor Holland and Counselor Chamzik. Any opposed? Counselor Capitania, Counselor Ashton, Astrid, Constable, geez, I can't, I don't know why I have I had time with this. Counselor Anderson and Counselor Wallach. The first reading passes.
I'll move second read.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Minz would like to move second reading of bylaw zero zero nine twenty twenty five as presented in Sketch Schedule A of the package. Recorded vote, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Yep, recorded vote is requested by Counselor Minz. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Counselor Cromwell, Counselor Gerlock, Counselor Minz, Counselor Holland, Counselor Chamzik. All those opposed? Counselor Anderson, Counselor Wallach and Counselor Capitany. I will put it out there, I know where it's gonna go. Is there unanimous consent for third reading? All those in favor for third reading? It's not got unanimous consent, so we will stop there. Thank you. I believe we are moving on to five point one, page fifty five of your package. And this is the twenty twenty five budget and tax rate scenarios. I'm just gonna start to just mention to say to urge all residents who are listening and everybody out there, please read this report and I'll. Turn it over to administration to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm a member of the council, I am joined by my colleagues and the finance department and we presented today to you some tax scenarios and also. Some adjustments made to the budget, so. If council is okay, do you prefer to start with the budget and we can walk you through some of the changes? I mean, obviously you need to know what your twenty twenty five budget looks like. Before you take a look at any scenarios, so if you have any questions, I believe there was a handout. We can go through it line by line if you prefer, or we can highlight any areas where you have some questions.
Okay, where does it, go ahead, Counselor Anderson, where would you like to go?
As this wasn't provided to all members of council. With enough time for us to go through it thoroughly, I think we should go through it line by line.
I agree. Is everybody comfortable? Alrighty, we're ready to go when you are, thank you.
Thank you, I'm just gonna turn it over to my staff here.
Okay, so we can start by going through the budget summary. Page one. You will not see any. Thing highlighted here, even though all the changes are being brought forward to here. This is the. Budget summary. Page one of the package.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct. Yes. So all the changes that you see followed through in all the budgets are being reflected in the summary, but they're not highlighted here because everything did. Change a little bit. But if you, Madam Chair, if you would like, we can go through following, starting with legislative budget and then go from there.
Thank you.
Yep. Starting with legislative budget, there there is no changes there whatsoever. From what was approved. Moving on to administrative services on page five. We increased our return on investment by eight hundred thousand based on our actuals for the year. We also did a transfer from reserves. For a hundred thousand. For from the asset management plan. We also had new dividend income from UFA starting in twenty twenty five. Salaries and benefits were also adjusted to reflect. Actuals and also based on reallocation of staff.
That's page seven, they will mention the pages when we get to them.
Sure. Actually, it's okay.
Okay, we've got a couple going on, Counselor Anderson and Counselor Minz.
Thank you, being that it increased so much for line twenty one ten corporate services staff salaries. Can we explain which positions were being reallocated and where they're being reallocated from?
Through the chair, so we had budgeted for two IT staff. That were both removed, we added a communications coordinator. And moved some of the money from the IT into the IT contract.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we've we've been trying, we've had. IT staff in the budget for for years, actually, we tried filling that, we just can't. We can't recruit, so. We're proposing to reallocate some and just we were redoing the contract with our contract provider to provide us additional services, but. We're kind of gonna give up on getting any staff right now until conditions change.
Thank you, so satisfying.
Follow up, you're adding a new communications coordinator?
Additional communication coordinator, correct.
Additional, so there will be two of them.
Correct.
I just to piggyback on Counselor Anderson's talk there. Is there a reason why we can't find IT staff, like 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 what's like, because there's nobody out there or?
We. I it. Those people with those skills right now. We weren't able to recruit locally, so we're probably trying to recruit from a metro area and. They don't need to move because they can stay there and make. They're living there, there's, we just, we need to get lucky with that individual that wants to live in small town living in a beautiful place that's. Within less than two hours from Edmonton, but they. We just. For that particular discipline, we're not. We're not lucky. We're doing okay in other areas.
So if we hear of somebody that's looking for a position, throw.
Yeah, we still, technically, there's still. Money in the budget for either more contracting or a staff person.
Oh, okay.
But we just, we just haven't been had any luck.
Okay, and that. I guess I got a couple of questions, that's line twenty two forty six. Other professional fees. Is that where that ties into? Possibly. It goes up from seventy thousand dollar budget to two hundred and. Fifty two. Who's the chair?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Twenty two forty, yes, that's the increase to our. Yeah.
Okay.
To our contractor.
Right on, okay. Hello, there's, this is so, so twenty five eleven office supplies goes from seventy thousand to a hundred and seven?
Twenty five eleven.
Twenty five eleven would be on page ten. Page, page. I thought we went. Oh, I thought we, oh, I thought we were over it.
Not yet.
Oh, okay, I'm 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 done. Please go ahead. Order in which you would, you were going there, yeah.
Madam Chair, if I would suggest we handed another handout that says changes from December interim budget. If you could go through that rather than going, all those changes are also there right from the budget, but. In in this document, you will see a little bit of an explanation for all the changes that did already happen. And if a member of council have questions from these, we can go through them individually.
Okay, thank you, is everybody familiar with the the changes from December interim budget? That we received, it came through email last night? Everybody's got it, okay? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, twenty five eleven isn't, I don't see that in there, so. Yeah, it's not on here, so maybe provide an answer.
Yes, so Member of Council. That allocation for the office supplies is integrated with their IT. So a portion of the two ITs that we reduced. Came for, we allocated for ergonomics and computer replacements.
Thank you. So followed by after wages, we increased our professional services and legal fees by a hundred thousand. This is for our, again, transfer from reserves from the assets asset management plan. We'll be using this to look at our budget and how we do some of our internal billing and gross recovery stuff.
Counselor Anderson, go ahead.
And your recreation grants, there's. One for a line item for assist schools in bus calls and another one for bus to swim and other programs. On page eleven of the agenda package. Can you explain what the difference between those two line items is?
Through the chair, we we haven't changed these, these are just what have been carried forward from prior years. I know the assist school and bus program is per the policy two six one three. I I don't know much, I can look into the bus to swim program and get back to you about that one, I don't know much.
Thank you, that'd be great because I don't think fifteen hundred dollars is adequate to be busing. Kids from water, Hudson Boyle. Grass lounge to swimming, so I'm almost wondering if this didn't get duplicated at some point and they bumped up one of the line items and then just have kept the other one in here. But I would like some clarification on that, I'd also like some clarification on the teen center contributions, where. Our contributions sent to each of these. Groups last year? Like, is it just a check that we're sending? Is there some kind of recognition, because I remember seeing an article in The Advocate saying that the county had. Given them about five hundred dollars or something like that, and I don't remember. Seeing that we had given them five thousand dollars for the Boyle Youth Center, so kind of wondering how that program's working, if we are paying it out? If you're checking in with these groups, like. How is it working?
Sure, we can get back to you about that one for sure, too.
Thank you, Counselor Wallach.
Just going back to page nine under registration and fees. I don't see Alberta Hub listed on this budget or the economic development budget. Can you confirm that we're still paying that?
Through the chair, sorry, Alberta.
Alberta Hub.
Alberta Hub on page nine is where we're at.
It's not listed there, that's why I'm wondering, it's not listed in the act dev budget as well.
We're just gonna pause for a moment until everybody's on the same page over here so that we don't have more voices speaking than. Page nine. We're on page nine, we're on code twenty two seventy at the bottom, which is for registration fees. Pardon me, registration fees and land title fees, and the question is Alberta Hub is not included in this list.
Right, yes.
Okay. Everybody, are we all on the same page? That's a nothing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's okay. Okay, so are we all good folks? Everybody's on the same page? Okay, page nine. Code twenty two seventy.
Madam Chair, if you flip to page sixty four. It looks like it's there.
In the act dev budget.
In the active, okay, so it's in the active, okay. Okay.
I just questioned why the. The. Chamber fees are included in this one and and not in the active one. But that's whatever.
Would you like it moved, would make more sense? They can be shifted?
Yep, we can, we can do that.
That's great, fantastic progress. Anybody else on this one? Alright. Next. Counselor Anderson has a question.
We move on. Are all members of council in favor of adding another communications coordinator? As per the list here. It says that that's another hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Are we? I just want to make sure that we're actively making the decision that we're not just. Skipping by it.
No, I I see, I see, there's a hand up for sure, I guess. Right now, I, in my my brain, I would be making notes on all of these things because this is a discussion time. We're not passing this today, which we're discussing it more than anything, so for me, that twigged in my brain too and I wrote it down. And I, we will be coming back and having further discussion, or would you prefer? That we, because not everybody's here now as well, so how would you prefer? This conversation carry on.
I think if there's things we find concerning or want changed. We should let admin know now so that they can make those amendments prior to the final presentation to council, because they may have to shift things. Throughout.
Okay.
And we shouldn't be. Throwing those amendments at them at the last second, that doesn't seem fair to administration if we knew about them a week or two in advance.
Okay. So when it comes, Counselor Cromwell, we'll we'll come back to what Counselor Anderson said, but Counselor Cromwell, go ahead.
Thank you, I. I agree with Counselor Anderson, I. We're not here to dictate to men what positions they're allowed to have, but we do dictate the budget. And as we are moving forward, I would like to have explanations from administration for changes like that. As the budget is our our document, but not the staffing, so I would like the. The reasons are, you know, to actually talk about having that other position. So from a budgetary point, we can consider the pros and cons whether we approve that or deny that budget request.
Thank you. So we'll open the discussion for the for the communications coordinator so that everybody is on the same page and can weigh in on that. Okay, where do we want to begin, do you want to start?
Madam, administration will go first, I got no problem addressing it. It's been a constant refrain that I keep hearing from council that they want more things done in communication, maybe more mailouts, they want. Specific things added to social media, they want. Basically, it's more, 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 and so we prepared a communication strategic plan, which. Tells council more. We want to do more mailouts, direct mailouts to people, maybe even quarterlies if we ever get to that stage. Which would be great, that's the gold standard in other counties, in order to do that, we need more resources. Otherwise, if you're happy with level of service at communications right now, please tell us that and we, there will be no changes, thank you.
Thank you, no, and I appreciate that, because what exactly twigged my mind about the position was what you exactly said, the the strategic plan that. Has been just rolled out that we all accepted. I was curious how that was going to play out with one person, I, you know, I sat back and went, oh, you're gonna be here till midnight most nights. So, you know, I kind of understood it that we would see it, but go ahead, please.
Well, and I guess just to clarify, I'm not opposed to the position. I'd just like to be able to look a taxpayer in the eye and say, yes, I recognize we added this. And I can very easily justify why and you're going to see results from it, so. I just, I think we should make the active decision to include it versus just. Adding the things and.
Without a conversation.
Skipping past it.
Got it. Thank you, anybody else want to weigh in on that one? Go ahead, Counselor Chamzik.
Yeah, without a doubt, there was a lot of work putting into that plan, I know I'm excited to see it and, you know, to justify that plan being put in place, I mean. I. Think that, I mean, we've got to move forward, we need the resources, so.
Thank you, and I know for just in speaking with people, one of the biggest complaints. That I hear is why wouldn't we told this, where's the communication, I don't look at Facebook, right, and so. I'm so glad to see that we have this strategy and I know. It may be difficult to look at a second position, but the benefits I think will far outweigh, as you know, many prescription that they say, but anyway. Anybody else? Please go ahead.
Through the chair, I I just wanted to go back to the teen center contributions, we just looked it up, we did make the three five thousand dollar payments to the three clubs. In twenty twenty four.
Oh, I did not mean to hit that button. Oh, that's how that works.
Just so we know.
Yep, December fourth of twenty twenty four. Moving on to software maintenance. We increased our Laserfish annual from twenty six thousand to forty thousand. We increased our GIS from ninety seven thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand. And then as the budget officer said, we did increase the IT contract from a hundred and thirty thousand to two hundred and fifty two thousand. And that is the increases being covered through the reduction in wages for the IT staff. We also increased, well, we added a new line item for Laserfish maintenance for six thousand. And then also okay alone for four thousand.
Yep, okay, hang on, I think everybody's needing to know where we are again, so we're on page eight.
Page eight.
Page eight and we're on code twenty two forty. Yeah, so if we can read the code as well, that would be really helpful.
On me?
If we can also read the code as well, when we talk about a category would be very helpful, Counselor Capitany.
I hate to do this, but I just want to go back to the teen centers. There was a concern that I heard that the teen center in Wondern River had not been operating since December. So did you guys have confirmation that it was an operation when you sent the check? Or can we get a confirmation if it is still open?
Through the chair, I can find out through our grants coordinator and find out. And get back.
I assume it would have been cash, but I just, I don't want to. To. Make an assumption or something I don't really know about, but had heard. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have anything, alright, please, please go ahead.
What's the difference between this?
Sorry, you want.
Take your time, take your time. Sorry, we're just confirming uh, some data here. Absolutely.
Yeah, he's asked me if he's budgeted this twice. Okay. We just need to confirm it.
Moving on to uh, two-two-four-six, other professional fees. We just uh, noted that there's a duplicate. We put the appeal piece twice there, so we will be removing one line item. They'll be reduced by one hundred and sixty thousand there.
So what this is, Madam Chair, is based on the change in assessment this year. Um, we're um, anticipating a number of people will go to full appeal. So we're, we estimated the cost per appeal, working with our board and uh, the assessors. And we're estimating fifty full appeals. And so that that number is an estimate, so we're budgeting for it. So it, it should just be the one number, not twice. But it's, we're anticipating about fifty appeals.
Thank you. Does everybody have that?
And Madam Chair, we normally get one appeal a year, so it is kind of a big thing.
Thank you very much. Okay, everybody have it? Okay, thank you very much.
Moving on to page nine, two-two-seven-zero. Uh, we added Northern Alberta Elected Leaders um, Registration Fees for two hundred dollars going forward. Page ten. Two-five-eleven, um. The, our budget officer did explain their economics and laptops. For thirty-seven thousand. Also covered through removal of the wages of IT staff. Twenty-six ninety, we just adjusted the depreciation based on what we had actual for twenty twenty-four. This has no impact on anything because it does get added uh, back in the summary. If you see it, it does get added back at the bottom, so.
Just another government um, rec, rec, requirement that does us, yeah, just makes more work for you.
Yeah. No complaints. Followed by uh, two-seven-five-five, transfer to other organizations and individuals. We added Community Rail Advocacy Alliance for two thousand dollars. Uh, EPC School Internship Trip for twenty-five hundred dollars. And helipad assessments for twelve thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars alt per uh, council motions. Moving on to page eleven. Two-seven-six-zero, transfer to reserves. We increased the reserve transfer from one million to one point eight million to match the increase in interest from one million to one point eight million. So all the interest that we do earn is going straight to general reserves. And that would be it for admin budget. Any questions? Any more questions on admin?
Everybody looks happy. Do you have any question? Nope, you're good. Everybody's good. I don't see any, oh, did we lose Council Cromwell off Zoom? Okay, so yeah, service area. Okay, please go ahead.
We'll move on to Fire Protection Services. Page thirteen. Starting with the new DRP um, grant that we will be receiving of one hundred and eighty thousand um, in twenty twenty-five. Uh, that would be, sorry, code eighteen forty provincial grant. We also removed the Summer Village of Miata Beach and Bondis. Uh, the money we used to receive from them. I don't know them. Sorry, go ahead.
So the Summer Village of Miata and Summer Village of Bondis. This would have been um, a local government grant. So when you say we removed it, refresh my memory, what happened there?
Good afternoon, members of council. Um. The chief uh, mentioned that we budgeted twenty thousand, ten thousand each. But there's no agreements that was in place. So he removed it because we don't have any agreements with them right now.
Uh, okay, so I guess I wonder if we're working on agreements, could this possibly then be returned back to the budget? If, depending on agreements?
Perhaps it could. Um, Madam Chair, in our research, um, we couldn't find any fire agreements for any of the summer villages. Uh, no, there's one that's really out of date from the nineteen eighties. Um, and it references a payment every year, but it's really unclear how they pay us for incident. And a lot of times these days, the they, you pay for, just for response fees instead of paying uh, a retainer every year. So we're working on a new agreement. Council will see it in the, I would say in the next sixty days before it would be rolled out as a draft to all the summer villages. We, we really need new agreements with every summer village.
Absolutely.
So until we do that, we remove that from the budget, so it doesn't make it look like we are gonna receive it.
Thank you very much. So, yeah, it has, it's easier to add a revenue line later than it is to spend, so thank you.
Perfect. Moving on to eighteen fifty-one, other agency transfer or grants. We included um, FRIA Fire Smart Grants as well as TC Energy Grant. Totalling to eighty thousand four hundred and ninety-nine. Uh, next up, we did nineteen ninety-four, other revenue. Um, so this will be revenue that we deferred in twenty twenty-four that is being brought back in twenty twenty-five. So we can utilize that money. So, which is the Casland OHS Project, two hundred and ten thousand remaining. We're bringing that in. Um, as well as the Equipment Fund for twenty thousand four hundred and seventy-five and the FSTP Grant for ten thousand five hundred and ninety-five. Moving on to expenses, two-one-one-zero, salaries. We included a seasonal fire service tech for three months for fourteen thousand. We also adjusted the salaries uh, based on just allocation of managers and directors. We included training pay per policy for twenty-five thousand. And then we also reduced the paid-on call to one hundred and seventy-five thousand because we have not been able to um, get that started yet. So I, I believe the plan is first of July to uh, start the paid-on call. Uh, followed by twenty-one forty-two, benefits and allowance. We also adjusted that as every time you adjust uh, wages, you would be adjusting the benefits to. Twenty-one forty-three, training. We added uh, FRIA Fire Smart Grant Fire Service Training for ten thousand. This is related to, to the grant you uh, we seen up above. Then also the OHS Project Training for twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty-five also relates to the grant. Uh, and then FSTP uh, Grant Training as well for ten thousand five ninety-five. So these are usually most of these are just in and out uh, from the grant. The grant comes in, the expense is for the same amount, so it has no impact on the budget. But we still have to show the in and out on, on here. Moving on to two-two-one-seven, telephone cellphone. Um, we will be buying radios uh, for Casland, and this is all covered through the OHS Grant as well. For forty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-four. Page fourteen, uh, two-two three-four, professional consulting and legal fees. There is uh, Casland Vegetation and Mulching all covered through the FRIA Grant for fourteen ninety-nine. As well as the plant update covered through FRIA Grant for seventy-five hundred. Uh, two-two-four-six, other professional fees. We have auto, automatic vehicle location for twenty thousand four hundred. Moving on to two-two-five-zero, yeah, so go ahead.
Thank you. So for the automatic vehicle location that is covering every single fire services unit, so everything from, everything we have, right? It's not, there, there's nothing that's going to be eliminated from the location services. Is that accurate? I just want to make sure every one of them is, is covered.
You couldn't wonder, like, are you talking to the extent of, you know, like, even a flaw in side by side stuff like that?
Everything, absolutely everything. You betcha, because I'm, I'm, I'm asking that exactly trailers, because quite often when you're dealing with your, your incidents and whatnot, you've got side by side that could be two miles down the road and you've got, you know, yeah, just wanting to know that everybody's looked after.
Madam Chair, uh, it's a work in progress, but that's the intent to have it on all vehicles, yeah. So we, we track them all.
Okay, so this isn't going, I guess I just have to get it clear in my head. This doesn't cover everything yet, but it's coming. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to two-two-five-zero, contracted services. Uh, oh, sorry, I guess we did. There's Casland vegetation and mulching. We did that for forty-five thousand. Then there's uh, Jackfish Lake Fire Guard Reclamation, which is covered through DRP for two hundred thousand. And then also Emergency Social Services Plan Update for fifty-six thousand. Moving on to two-two-five-two, contracted repairs for the buildings. We have uh, Fire Hall Security Upgrades for twenty thousand. And Fire Hall Signage and Branding was removed and moved to twenty twenty-six. From twenty twenty-five.
Don't mean to go back, but the Jackfish Lake Fire Guard Reclamation, that that hasn't been done yet, the, the reclamation? No?
Don't matter, Chair, it hasn't.
Okay. Knocked down a whole bunch of trees to.
Moving on to two-two-five-three, Contractor Repairs Equipment. We moved uh, Cora Court Respiratory Fit Tester Annual Certification from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. We also moved uh, Command Trailer Maintenance, WireLAN Trailer Maintenance, Flat Deck Trailer Maintenance. And Reconfiguration of Old CPU Vehicle from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. So page fifteen, we also added Division Nine Unit Six-six-six, WireLAN Trailer Maintenance for two hundred and fifty dollars. We added Division Four Unit Six-six-five Flat Deck Trailer Maintenance. Sprinkler, sprinkler trailer maintenance, flat deck trailer maintenance for two fifty each. As well as enclosed trailer maintenance uh, for your Division Five and another enclosed treasure. Enclosed trailer maintenance for two fifty each. Uh, there is also for Division Seven, we have Flat Deck Trailer Maintenance and Enclosed Trailer Maintenance, two fifty each. Uh, as well as Fire Fleet Life Cycle Analysis for seventy-five hundred. Yep.
For the fleet, uh, Fire Fleet Life Cycle Analysis. Have we gotten quotes for that already, or is that just uh, amount we're sticking in the budget to make sure we have something in there?
I believe, uh, to the chair, I believe we, this is based on a quote.
Okay. Really reasonable quote. I was expecting it to be more so.
Eight sixteen, two-two-seven-zero, licenses, permits, registrations. We added uh, Drivers Abstract for thirty-one hundred. We updated, sorry, to thirty-one hundred from eleven hundred in twenty twenty-four. Baptiste Lake VHF Repeater Radio License for a hundred and fifty. Boyle VHF Repeater Radio License for three hundred and fifty. And then First Dew Electronic Records Management Annual License for fifteen thousand. Moving on to two-five-one-zero, Supplies. We have uh, personal protective equipment. We uh, ten percent replacement based on one hundred and thirty members and ten-year lifespan. We opted to ninety-five thousand going forward. Fire Consumables, update from eighteen thousand five hundred to thirty thousand. Portable Gas Detector, um, we put in thirty-five hundred for that. As well as uh, six thousand for calibration station of gas detector. Remaining uh, deferred revenue from Casland OHS Project, um. This will be the non-capital equipment that we will be buying for a hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. This should cover up most of that deferred revenue. Uh, then we also have uh, EHS MFR Equipment Fund for twenty thousand four hundred and seventy-five. And then uh, WireLAN Equipment for ten thousand covered through TC Energy Grant. Moving on to two-five-three-two, Construction Supplies or Maintenance Supplies. We have Improved Door Locks, uh, High Security uh, and Freeze Protection for four thousand. Moving on to page seventeen. Two-five-four-four. Uh, we included Training Center Dumpster for sixteen hundred dollars going forward. As well as Training Center Porta Party for five hundred dollars going forward. Two-six-nine-zero, Depreciation. We adjusted it based on actuals. Again, no impact on the budget. And we've removed the Fire Pro Two Software Annual License. Starting in twenty-five onwards, we removed it. And that's all for Fire Protection.
I just have a quick question, and it's probably been answered already, but I have forgotten. AFRAC radios for fire services, is everybody outfitted now with them, or is that still being rolled out?
No, that was all, yeah.
Everybody's on the same channel.
Should be. I know we spent the money, so.
Okay, well, that's good. Good to hear. Thank you.
You bet. Moving on to Emergency Management and Highway sixty-three Emergency Services, page nineteen. We have Deferred Revenue from twenty-four EMPP Grant for nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-two. That's coming in as income on uh, eighteen forty, conditional grants. Then we have eighteen fifty-one, um, Local Government Grants. We have the um, Regional Emergency Management Program Project Partner Contribution of thirty thousand. And then we have uh, salaries decreased due to departmental allocations. So that will be the two-one-one-zero. Sorry, it's not highlighted here, but uh, salaries and benefit did change a little bit. Uh, and also two-two-three-four, which is the, again, the Regional Emergency Management Plan, Revisions and Exercise for seventy-five thousand. Two-two-five-zero, Contracted Services. Um, this is the EMPP Grant uh, Deferred Revenue for nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars. That will be all for Emergency Management Highway sixty-three Services. Moving on to page twenty-two, Enforcement Services. Uh, starting with two-one-one-zero, Salaries and Wages. We have.
I'll just let it. There we go. Councilor Hall is now live on Zoom.
Great. So we just adjusted the wages and benefits again to factor in for the three CPU and support staff. So we just adjusted the wages and benefits again, to factor in for the three CPO and support staff. Uh, moving on to two two five.
And Counselor Cromwell is now live on Zoom. Sure, um, thank you, uh, Counselor Chum's a very good idea. So for Counselor Hall and for Counselor Cromwell, who have just joined us, we're currently on Enforcement Services. I believe we're still on page twenty two of that uh, particular document that we received over email last night. If everybody's with us, give us a thumbs up and let me know that you're good to go and you're following us along the same way we are. Yeah, look at that, two thumbs up, awesome, okay, we're good to go, thanks so much.
We'll keep moving, so we are at uh, page twenty two, count number two two five three Contracted Repairs Equipment. So we included Unit seven hundred and ten Exterior Light Bar Install for forty five hundred dollars. Twenty five ten Supplies, we added uh, Body Camera for forty five hundred dollars. Moving on to page twenty three, two seven five five Transfer to Other Organization. We adjusted the police funding model to reflect the actual requisition. Or five hundred and thirty five thousand six hundred and thirty one dollars. Two nine nine zero Other Expenses, we added Patrol Vehicles Deep Cleaning for five hundred dollars. As well as, oh, sorry, I guess that's it. For that one. Moving on to Common Services Budget on page twenty five. We had, uh, starting with nineteen thirty Transfer from Reserves. We have five hundred and seventy five thousand being transferred from Bueller Pit Reclamation. Reserve that we had set up, this was the money that was saved from the reclamation cost in twenty four. And transferred to reserves and being pulled in twenty twenty five. Then we have Asset Management Project, two hundred thousand coming in from reserves as well. And sixty five thousand from the shop design project coming in from reserves.
Uh, just a quick. So the Bu- Bueller Pit Reclamation, that was money that was saved from the?
That is correct.
That's awesome, that's that's good work, if we can save money, thank you.
Moving on to page twenty six, two one one zero Salaries and Wages. Uh, again, they were adjusted to reflect actual based on how many staff we have. And just reallocation of uh, Managers and Directors. Um, depending on how much time they put on each department or each budget. We also, again, uh, two one four three, the benefits also get adjusted every time you're, yeah, touching wages. And then we also included the boot allowance here for eighteen thousand. Sorry, it's not highlighted there, but it's under twenty one forty two as well. Moving on to two one four three Training. Uh, we reduced it, sorry. It was just missed in the interim budget, it should have been included initially, so we have included that now. Two two three four Professional Consulting and Legal Fees. We have update from a hundred and fifty one thousand to two hundred and eighty thousand. And then we included sixty five thousand for a feasibility study for the new Public Works Building. As per Council Motion. Two two four six Other Professional Fees. We moved the Recreation Plan or Asset Management Plan from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six. To be completed in twenty twenty six.
That plan is the, like, like for. The recreation around the lakes and stuff.
The campground.
It's it's a life cycle uh, assessment of all of our rec facilities, including campgrounds, parks. Beaches, everything, kind of like we did the building condition assessments this year for every building we had. We're trying to do the same thing with every rec. Bit of infrastructure we have to give us a game plan.
Boat launches.
Everything, hundred percent, all in one, and it'll be just like the bridge plan, then the end result will scare everyone, but. It's information, we have to do it.
Does, and I'm just gonna throw it out there, does that include the trails?
Uh, well, it'll address uh, trails that are our responsibility. So that'll, I'm sure that that will be, uh, uh, could be a point of discussion in twenty twenty six.
Perfect, thank you.
Perfect. Moving on to two two five zero Contracted Services. We up the uh, gravel pit reclamation from two hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and eighty thousand. Just to factor in inflation and the. Increased costs in general. Moving on to page twenty seven, two two five three Contracted Repairs Equipment. Uh, we removed the VHF Tower Space Rental Radio Licenses Radios. And we moved it to uh, two two seven zero, we just. And uh, also factored it in into other departments rather than just having it all in Common Services. So that factors in the two two seven zero licenses, permits and registration. Moving on to page twenty eight. Uh, twenty six ninety depreciation, again, we just adjusted that to actuals. And I will let uh, our Budget Officer carry on from, for the rest.
Hi, good afternoon, um, we're at page thirty for the road construction budget. Uh, we're looking at line number nineteen sixty, gross recovery re- revenue. We had a allocated, we have changed the number uh, to match all our expenses. All our gross recovery expenses to match for uh, the whole thing. That's why we changed that number for six million six hundred and fifty seven nine hundred and thirty six. Uh, page thirty one, uh, salary. Uh, we decreased the salary by three point three ninety one, three hundred and forty nine to. Match actuals from last year and also to factor it in the allocations that we do for Directors and Managers. And same thing with the benefits, once you move the salary, always tied in with the benefits.
And lack, lackey, did this not get reduced out of Common Services?
We have transferred, um, yes.
Yeah, so it came from Common Services, so it's, it's not like a new three point three nine one.
Hey, moving forward, we also, um, page thirty two. Uh, twenty five thirty five Road Surfacing. Uh, I guess I'm kind of getting ahead, uh, we'll, we'll go to twenty two seventy first. This radio license, um, forty five hundred just came from. Common Services, the VHF Towers. And also in line twenty five thirty five, uh, we had transferred this cost to. Line twenty nine sixty on page thirty three for road surfacing as we do the work ourselves. For four point five million. And. If you go to page thirty three, depreciation, we just match it to actual same thing. And also, there's a new line item in twenty nine sixty, the, it was just approved recently by council. Drainage ditch for two hundred and ninety four thousand. Six seven.
I really appreciate when admin has put in the motion numbers here, like that. Fantastic job with that, because I think that helps us track where we're making our decisions too.
Absolutely, and I'll also break into, if you need a break, please just, because we'll listen all day long, so if you need a break, just let us know.
No worries, um, any question in the road construction budget? Moving forward, uh, Community Transportation. Page thirty five. Um. We have made some changes, but.
Madam Chair, this will be uh, adjusted, uh. Again, you might see a little bit of change in this, this will be reduced, we had initially uh, changed some wages, um. But since this is um, agreed upon based on the committee with the partners. We can't just increase it, so we will be reducing this back to the original amount, so you will see it reduced for the next uh, meeting.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Um, in line twenty, oh, sorry.
I seen uh, twenty two sixty, line twenty two sixty on page thirty five, we've got SUV rental. It's just pops up my mind, are we ever gonna see an SUV back here for council and, and?
Yeah, I think the plan is, that's why, I think it's budgeted for half a year, is that right?
Yes.
Krista? I think this is a trial, and we just need to review that with our committee.
Yeah.
But I think the plan is to, uh, we're gonna enter in a lease, lease or something. Uh, for a, for an SUV, it's working out great for community transportation, and, and then we would get ours back.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Perfect. Um, in line twenty six ninety, same page thirty five, we just reduced the depreciation to actuals. That's all the changes for Community Transportation. And like uh, our CFO mentioned, we're gonna. On the next meeting, budget meeting, we're gonna change those numbers again for salary and benefits. The Airport Budget, page thirty eight. Um, in line two one one zero, we did adjust the, it's not highlighted on the. Budget document, but we did adjust the salaries and benefits as well, again, for department managers and directors. Being allocated to their right spots. Um, twenty two thirty four, Contracted Service Landing Fee Invoice, we completely removed it. Actually. Decrease, it's actually incorporated, yeah, in thirty, thirty six hundred to. Traffic Activity Report, yes. And then we just moved some twenty twenty, in line twenty two fifty, runway light system and maintenance, we just. Added the five thousand dollars in there. And on page thirty nine. Two two five two Contracted Building Repairs, Building Maintenance. Uh, we have reduced this budget to. To su- uh, to supplies, so you can see four thousand dollars here were transferred to two five one zero. And line two two seven zero, we just increased the registration fees by forty six hundred. Do you have any question?
Thank you. As far as the landing fees, can we talk about the administration required to invoice and collect the landing fees? Like, I'm just looking at thirty five hundred dollars for sale of services for landing fees, is it worth it? Because. I don't know, to me, it's probably costing us more in mid-time every year to invoice that than it is. Worth charging the landing fees?
I see a twitch over there.
Is that something that maybe we should be looking at?
All, all these little things like that. When we have time and they should be looked at, in every little service area, is this worth doing? But some of that discussion might come out of the level of service review, little ideas that, are you guys sure you should be doing this, and so, good question.
Absolutely, yeah.
What I was wondering about that is, is there a, uh, is this legislative that we have to keep this information? Or, or is it just because we wanna collect money?
Don't know, we'd, we'd come back with some of that.
I've often shook my head about it too, but.
Yes.
Alright, um, line twenty five thirty, assault for airport runway, this was just moved from line twenty nine sixty.
Can we, can we change the word salt? To chemical? Cause that is a, absolutely, we do not do that, we do not put salt on the runway. And if we ever wrote down somewhere that we do that, someone's gonna pick up on it.
Noted.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, moving along, uh, twenty six ninety depreciation. Um, it's a big chunk, because I think we just recently removed our. App gas, that's why one of our depreciation went down for that. And in line twenty nine sixty, a lot of these are just moving from one item to the other. So, just kind of went to the different areas in this budget, so if you guys have any questions. I think for airport, okay. Alright, uh, water budget, uh, it's on page forty one. Uh, line item fourteen ten, uh, we did increase the revenue for the sale of services and sale of water. Which is actually line item fourteen ten and fourteen forty, to match the actuals that we had from last year. So those are why the numbers are up, and we cause average it. Hmm, and line two one one zero, two one forty two, s- same thing, salaries and benefits, uh. Making sure that all the proper managers and directors are in the right spots. Uh, line two two one seven, we actually transferred the nineteen hundred to. Uh, wastewater, because uh, the salary has to be equal for, I mean, the phone expenses is equal to our water. Um, person. Uh, the, we have added a new line item, two 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 one, for four thousand dollars for water plus subscription. And also line twenty two fifty, we added a increase of twenty thousand for line repairs. Factoring inflation and more unexpected line repairs. Hey, moving along, page forty two. Uh, line two two seven zero Radio Licenses. Uh, this was just a transfer from Common Services, the fifteen hundred for that VHF Tower License. Uh, for line two five one zero, two five one zero. Uh, we also, since we increase our revenue, we also increase the supplies that we use to for water consumption. That's why it's reflecting those changes with that. Uh, we also have added in line two five four zero twenty five hundred for factoring gas expenses, utilities. Uh, same thing with power, two five forty two, we increased by two thousand to match actuals. And also depreci- uh, depreciation line two six nine zero. For actually that one, I don't think it changed, it was just highlighted here, but it was mentioned in there, so. Any questions for water?
Sorry, I'm gonna just zone out there for a second, um, is there a, um. Where are the upgrades to the uh, credit card systems and that stuff in here?
It should be in the capital budget.
Okay. And then the, the credit card fees and the stuff associated with that isn't in here? As operational?
Sorry, so it's a whole system that would be put in place, so it's, that's why it's in the capital budget.
I know, but the service, like, you're gonna have to pay for the service, right? For the credit card fees?
Yeah.
So, is that included in here?
No, it is not, but we can factor that in for sure. I will uh, talk to our operator and see what is expected for fees and charges, and we can uh, estimate.
In addition to, to that, while we're on that line, so the, um, back on page forty one on. Uh, code two 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 one for the water plus subscription, I'm assuming that subscription will change for the new software, is that? So are we gonna loot, I, I, I guess, is, isn't the water plus our current? Cards, current cards, however, system, wouldn't that be then?
Uh, don't know, we'll get back to you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Sorry, in our last package, it says thirty six hundred a year with the new system.
Thank you.
We can incorporate that in.
Any more water budget questions?
We're ready to go, thanks.
Okay, so move forward. Um, wastewater services budget, page forty-four. Uh, line item fourteen-forty-one. We are also increased the revenue to match actuals. Um, also. Again, twenty-two, uh, salaries and benefits, two-one-one-zero, two-one-fourty-two. They both increase as the. Allocation for directors and managers. Uh, the line two-two-one-seven is the line number that was taken from. Um, the water budget. To split how, out his costs for the phone bill. Line two-two-forty-six. Uh, increase large survey by twelve thousand. And for the line two-two-five-zero. Uh, there's no budget, budget impact change, he just. We just, uh, changed the number to increase the line manhole by taking it from the Rochester Lagoon brushing. Okay, and then line item two-five-eleven, um, office supplies has been increased for the alarm in Rochester. Lift station. To factor that in, and also two-five-fourty-two, we increase the budget to. Track, uh, power for twelve thousand. Depreciation, oh, sorry, um. Line twenty-six ninety depreciation increase as well, match up actuals. Any questions for waste water budget?
Madam Chair, I just also like to mention, I know how, uh, every budget you see the salary is changing. But if you look at, at that changes spreadsheet, you will see that usually even we're adjusting it, it might be a fifteen hundred dollar here, there. Adjusted, it's not a significant change, but we are still highlighting it, so council knows that it still did change from originally approved budget.
Awesome, thank you.
Alright, we can go to waste management budget, uh, page forty-six. Uh, under line nineteen-thirty, transfer from reserves. Uh, twenty-twenty-four carry forward from Atmore project surplus for twenty-five thousand. The next line item is twenty-two-two-three-four. So we have adjusted a few numbers. For monitoring, um. For grassland and Wonder River, we decrease it by twenty thousand. Based on a updated quote. We also increased the ten thousand for study for existing landfills. Uh, we also decrease, uh. The Harnaha by ninety thousand. As we are doing phase one and we're waiting for future recommendations. And also we have de- decreased the hundred thousand for Baptiste Lake and same thing. Uh, we're doing the phase one and we're doing, waiting for recommendations from the professionals. And for Collington, we also removed fa- uh, phase one as it's already done. And for line item two-six-nine-zero, we remove depreciation for actuals. Any questions for waste management? Um, okay, we'll go to li- uh, page forty-seven, FCSS.
Forty-eight.
Oh, page forty-eight. So, overall impact for FCSS didn't affect the budget, it remained the same for the deficit. But we still did highlight all those changes, those in and outs and. Some deferred grants that was updated as per our FCSS manager. But we're still gonna mention all of those, so in eighteen-forty, we have increased FCSS grant as per the agreement. Um, line eighteen-fifty. South, uh, Summer Villages, South Baptiste. Added extra three hundred eighteen and two hundred thirteen dollars. On page forty-nine. Telephone budget for FCSS. Thousand note change, somebody.
I believe if we just, uh, we've got, well. Counselor Cromwell is back on, live on Zoom, Counselor Cromwell, so you know where we are. We are on page forty-nine, I believe now. But we're gonna go back to page forty-eight under FCSS, and Counselor Minz has a comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At, at the, at the end there on line eighteen-fifty, uh, it's got. Uh, Summer Village South Baptiste, they, they, they gave us that much more money, or what? Three eighteen and two thirteen or?
Yes.
They, they forwarded the money, that, perfect, thank you.
Okay, back to, uh, page forty-nine. Uh, line two-two-one-seven, so the budget, the budgeted item for phones is fourteen thousand. We decrease it to eight thousand. And line two-two-two-one, advertising general, we increase it from twenty-one hundred. To accommodate a fifty-five hundred. Uh, line twenty-two thirty-two audit fees, we completely remove it from FCSS budget. So that's why it's zero. And line two-two-three-eight, we also adjusted the facilitator fees. Line two-two-five-three, equipment maintenance went up by five hundred dollars. Two-two-six-four, we reduced the rent. By thirty-six hundred to one thousand. And on line, um, page fifty, line two-five-one-zero. We have some adjustments in the supplies. We increase, uh, like for different, uh, departments of FCSS. So the total changes is somewhere twenty-one, two thousand one hundred and twenty-four. From twenty-four to twenty-five. That's everything for FCSS and. Questions? Um, okay, we're starting again in cemetery budget, page fifty-two. We increased the contracted services for fifteen thousand. It's due to.
Dangerous tree removal.
Dangerous tree removal. And also we have increased the gross recoveries by thirteen, eighteen thousand. Just to factor it in more work being done for cemeteries. Any questions for cemetery budget?
Please, no. We're good to go.
Okay, and, uh, planning and development budget, page fifty-four. The only change we had is the salary was moved by a. By a minimal number, thirty-three thousand dollars. Just to pro- factor it in the allocations for the N D budget. And that's on page fifty-four. Moving on to ag, agriculture, page fifty-seven. Um, line fourteen-ten. We have, uh, for sale of services, we just moved. Three thousand in that budget and the rest we increased by six grand to factor in three sales. Which is sitting in line fourteen-twenty, sales of goods. Um, for. Two-one-one-zero and two-one-fourty-two, salaries and benefits, uh, incre- uh, we reduce the budget. Um, but. Twenty-eight thousand. Just for proper allocations and factoring seasonals and everything. And also. Line. Two-six-nine-zero on page fifty-eight for depreciation. It increased by two thousand due to actuals. Any question for ASB budget? Oh, ag budget, sorry. Okay, and recreation budget, page sixty-one. We have transfer from reserves line nineteen-thirty for fifty thousand, so it's a twenty-twenty-four carry forward from. Survey of disposition. Line two-one-one-zero, two-one-fourty-two, uh, salaries and benefit, uh. Change due to allocations. Line two-two-one-seven, uh, we increased the budget by thirty-six hundred, factored in. Inflationary costs. Two-two-three-four. Uh, we added five thousand, uh, I believe it's for professional lawyer fees consulting. Uh, line two-two-five-zero, we have decreased the budget for demolition by ten thousand dollars. And going to page sixty-two. We have transfer. Thirteen thousand from two-five-four-four. To two-five-fourty-two to factor in the power cost for the depart- for the department. Sorry.
Sorry, um, I noticed that there was nothing in here. Uh, factored in for the decisions we made around the North Skeleton Lake Community Association. And I'm just wondering if. We should be adding some in for those? Whether it be. Um, some legal review or some of the items that they requested. I just wanna make sure that we haven't missed something that council already approved.
To the chair, we, we will look into it and add the amount, for sure.
Thank you for that, uh, line two-six-nine-zero for depreciation, we just match it to actuals. For line two-seven-five-five, uh. We have decreased, uh.
We decreased the capital contribution to the multiplex to match what the town is contributing.
And also for line two-six-nine-zero, we just have to factor in county equipment, that's the fifteen thousand. For economic development budget, page sixty-four. Um, on line eighteen-fifty. We actually dec- transfer from operation. We decreased the line eighteen-fifty by eight thousand. As per new agreements with town and village. Also in line nineteen-thirty, there's a twenty-twenty-first surplus from ECHDAF transfer. Uh, that's the hundred-three thousand. In line two-one-one-zero and two-one-fourty-two, we allocated the salary and benefits. To the proper departments. Line two-two-four-six. We have factored in lobbyists for a hundred-three thousand. And also matched, uh, website. We got an updated code from the website. And we factored it to actuals. And same thing with the super host training. For line two-nine-nine-one, we just added, uh, two thousand dollars for promotional items. And that should be for economic development. Library board, there's no changes, page sixty-six. Uh, so this was, uh, already approved in the interim budget. And facilities, page sixty-eight. Uh, updated, uh, line two-one-one-zero and two-one-fourty-two to adjust for proper allocations for departments. Um, we have increased contracted services, but we have moved. Two-five-three-two, which is construction, construction supplies, also two-five-three-eight. In some of the contracted services. And some of them were, went into the two-five-two-one maintenance supplies. That's the change for facilities.
Thank you very much, I think, you know, um, there's a lot of fidgeting, so I think it's time we take a recess. If that's okay, and everybody can refresh their coffees, refresh their water, take a walk, stretch, what we need to do, but we'll come back in about. Seven minutes, does that work for everybody? Seven minutes, lovely, thank you.
Then we have uh playgrounds. Uh we will be spending sixty thousand, which will be uh from funded through taxation. As well as the fish cleaning tables for twenty thousand dollars funded through taxation.
Are the playground funds just for repairs or is that replacing different equipment bases?
I can find out and get back to you about that one.
If I may, sorry, if I may, with regards to playgrounds, can we identify which ones as well, please? Thank you so much.
Perfect. Moving on to the zero turn mower. It will now be funded through taxation. Um we removed the jet A fuel. And thirty thousand for it and then we added, well, we just. Uh reallocated forty thousand to be funded through taxation for the highway sixty three signage. I believe that was a council motion as well, I can confirm.
Council discussion was, I don't think there was a motion, but it's it's in here for council.
I apologize, um and we removed the Hamlet signage amount allocated there. We also removed the community transportation replacement SUV as it was moved to the. Community transportation um operating budget because it's just for a rental. Uh we changed the Collington Bridge replacement to be all funded through taxation. Instead of borrowing money from the bank. Uh we added the grassland school waterline valve for fifty five thousand to be funded through taxation. We removed the Rochester lift station upgrades. And we added the truck slash tool storage and canopy for thirty thousand funded through taxation. That will be all for the capital budget for twenty twenty five. I believe they're done, but I can verify that too. I know uh our utility operator was working on that, but.
I'm just thinking here, so. In the capital budget here, the ones that we are doing are are in yellow or how much capital budget is are we doing here?
Through the chair, so for capital budget, the yellow are the changes. Uh from the interim budget, all the items listed here are we're doing in twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I see we have councillor Cromwell is here, he's he always been here, but councillor Hall has left? Oh, I think he's back.
Just for clarification, council, the the big change on the meat is um. As many of these projects as can be handled by taxation, just the the normal tax levy, we've added them in, uh cuz we have some. Savings on the operating side of the budget, so we're trying to fund as mu- many of these and just leave reserves alone.
Appreciate that, um just so our our attendees on Zoom, we are on the five year capital plan. Page seventy of the report and uh. I'm gonna turn it back over to administration, oh councillor Cromwell's happy. Councillor Hall has a question.
Um yes, we've uh, I'm gonna have to step out to another meeting. So I wanted to offer my regrets and not being able to attend the rest, the balance of today's council meeting. But also I'd like to make uh provide a notice of motion that in an upcoming council meeting, I intend to propose. A motion that will direct admin. To seek legal advice regarding the irregular handling of the water rates by law today. So that will be coming up and should be recorded in the minutes as a notice of motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, so for the five year capital plan, um. The items you see highlighted are the same items that were highlighted in the previous page, this just shows some additional. Going forward, uh twenty six all the way to twenty twenty nine, such as the fish cleaning tables, uh the outhouses. The jet A fuel that was initially budgeted in twenty five moved to twenty twenty six. And that's about it, and sorry, uh. The grassland school waterline valve, I guess we did discuss that already, fifty five thousand, yes, that's right. So same changes as uh previous page.
Okay, thank you so very much, and is that the same then on page seventy one for the Rochester lift station? Upgrades and the tool uh truck tool storage and canopy?
Pardon me?
The last page seventy one, what you had just said applies to this.
And I will be getting back to you about the playgrounds. And um whether it's repairs or what we're doing and what locations, and I will also get back to you about the Rochester lift station upgrades to confirm. Why that was moved.
Thank you very much.
Can we add the uh school bus assistance? Programs?
Sorry, that's added in the operating side, but yes, I've made another bit.
Alrighty. That's a huge job, again, thank you so very much for uh going through it with us, um councillor Wallack.
Sorry, just a question, um we've spoken about a large sum of money that we should be putting into the reserves, is that included in in this budget?
Um pardon me, how much we're supposed to be putting in reserves?
With the stuff we talked about in clothes the other day.
Um enclosed, I can't talk about that.
I know, but is it gonna be added into the budget?
Um.
Or hidden in the.
We'd have to go into closed and you could give me clarification. Um I I think what I can discuss is. Um in the RFD. Um. I believe, oops, I'm sorry. It talks about. Um. Okay, page fifty five. Um. It's the second last paragraph and it says administration is estimating net surplus of three point five in twenty twenty four. Um is recommended this surplus be set aside for tax assessment complaints, so. We'll have a separate RFD for a motion on that on the twenty fourth. To close off our surplus and ask council for a motion to put it into a specific reserve.
Thank you very much. Um just in addition, I just wanna, I highlighted a few things on that discussion report, just so that um. Again, the public uh need to hear some of this information, not necessarily that they're going to go through and dig up an agenda and read this report, so. I just kinda wanted to run through a few things to to mention, um. That as it says in the report, the county assessor found significant changes to property assessments. Of agricultural and residential properties due to several factors, so of course our budget um. Is going to be impacted as well as our mill rates as well, ev- everything is going to be impacting due to that. So what the assessors found is new development on properties that had not been assessed before. There was a change in property values due to market conditions and sales data. And they found that some properties previously assessed as farmland were not eligible for farmland assessment and should be assessed under a different category such as residential. Another highlighted point uh from the report that I that I uh highlighted was the result is an overall uh assessment increase. Of a difference of four hundred thirty two million, six hundred twenty six dollars and seventy cents. Um this excludes properties that are not taxable, so our taxable uh assessment base. Increased to two billion nine hundred eighty one million, six hundred seventy eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. So it again, it's it's a lot of di- difficult decisions are being made, uh and we that we need still yet need to consider. Um administration is as what uh CAO just mentioned about estimating the net surplus, I'd highlighted that as well. Um the approximately three point five million, which he mentioned, I could say is coming up. Um the discussion regarding the twenty twenty five operating and capital budget. That I highlighted here is um following an approval, administration is recommending revisions to the budget. As we just went through, um and what that did. Was it decreases the operating budget by one million five hundred ninety four thousand, three hundred ninety seven dollars. And changes the capital budget to five million one hundred twenty four thousand. Due to two million eight hundred sixty three thousand, five hundred being moved from reserves. To taxation levy and the remaining amount of a hundred and thirty five uh thousand, eighty dollars carried forward from the twenty twenty four or removed. So these are really, for me, they highlighted um points that I highlighted here, really important to understand. Um other information I highlighted as well as communication by letter. Was made with owners of four hundred and fifty five properties and this is with regards, the assessors had sent these out. They sent them out to four hundred and fifty five properties in the county that were previously assessed under the farmland assessment class. But do not meet farming operations as defined in the Alberta Regulation two oh three slash twenty seventeen. Farming must have all three components of raising production and sale to meet the requirements of farming operations. Recipients of the letters um have, and this is really important, until April eighteen. Twenty twenty five to complete a farming operations declaration form to be considered under the farmland assessment class. If a farm uh uh person who feels that they don't want to fill out that declaration. Um I think that they need to understand the repercussion of not filling out that form. Um will they will leave, they their property will not be classed as farm, so it's really important that people look at that. Farm declaration, understand that that is what the assessor needs, um it's not something that the county is um making them do, it's it's a requirement that. Will help them along the way. And then we're going to, I guess, we're going to be looking into our uh tax rate scenarios as well. Um one thing that we mentioned here is that council previously expressed interest in bringing the tax ratio to four to one. Non-residential to residential, um which is included in the proposed tax scenarios. So those tax scenarios, um I'm thinking everybody has had a chance to look at them. And you will see them um on page sixty, page sixty one um of our package. And I'm wondering if. Administration wanted to discuss these any further or I'm I'm thinking we're done with the budget. Aspect of it, I think everybody's happy, we you know, the few things that will be changed will be coming back, so if we can move on to the tax rate rate scenarios. Um did administration want to? Way in?
Uh thank you, madam chair and members of council, uh so next week, uh we do plan to bring the final uh twenty twenty five budget for council's adoption. And it needs to be adopted before any uh tax bylaw is passed. Uh we also, our intent is to bring uh a draft tax um bylaw. For at least first reading, our intent as well is to have it passed by the May thirteenth regular council meeting to allow us time. To have all of the tax notices prepared and mailed out by May thirtieth. Um so before you are four scenarios, and as you mentioned earlier, um. We have one that's maintains a three point eight to one uh ratio and the rest are all four point uh. Four to one ratios, so we're open to questions and of course in the RFD, we also mentioned if council has. Other ideas, other options, we'll certainly bring those forward as well. Um and we'll incorporate them into draft tax bylaw or more than one bylaw, depending on which one you select. Uh so that's our intent is to have was uh at least the first reading for next week.
Thank you very much, I know when I looked at this, just personally, I'll just start the conversation, when I looked at this, uh my head just started to swim. And I thought, okay, hang on, if we go to the three point nine to one, what would that look like? Um and all of those things, and when I started, I just grabbed a spreadsheet and started going uh to make all of those different calculations and look at different scenarios. I ended up with eleven different scenarios and of course it's way too much to consider and it, you know, but it I it satisfied my own. Curiosity on what things would look like and um I know for me, I've settled. On a particular scenario um that I feel is. Especially considering our assessment, um the changes in it and how that's going to impact our residents. Um and with regards to all of the work that's being done with surplus and and with regards to. Our um reserves that are are absolutely being uh included in our in our budget. I believe for me personally, and I'll just start it out there, that I really liked scenario two. Which ends up being a five percent reduction on residential, no change to farm and. Turning our non-res from, uh I believe it was a three point eight to one to a four to one ratio. Um I felt satisfied with that and um I really appreciate administration once again for providing this information to us and. Um giving us the uh different things to look at and to consider, so I'm not sure where everyone else is is sitting. On this particular topic, but anybody, go ahead, councillor Anderson.
Thanks, I'd also support uh the scenario two where we have a five percent reduction to residential taxes and a four to one. Ratio, however, I would like to. Try and find the ninety four, six forty six to balance the budget at that. With that, um. Not take from reserves to be able to reduce our taxes, I think we could probably find. Ninety five thousand dollars somewhere and. I think it would be a win all the way around, so I'm not comfortable with. Taking from reserves to pay for the budget, but I do think that we, if we could find a way to balance that out, that is a huge win for our rate pairs.
Thank you, and and just in uh we go with regards to that, I've thought about the same thing, can we can we pull it out? Can where can we find that uh that little bit of a shortfall? And then I realized, I I reminded myself of the surplus that we've seen over the past couple of years and. I realize we have a whole bunch more to think about and we've got all of our other items, but for me, that small shortfall really didn't. Didn't impact for me to to try and find it in the budget, I was happy to see it.
Madam Chair, that. A hundred thousand we can find somewhere, we'll move money around, it'll be a balanced budget. Um. Just so you know, we, it there, I don't believe we budgeted for a water rate change. So if council did go forward with that, we did not budget for it. We didn't want to presume anything, so we'd have to estimate what that is and, and incorporate. That into final budget or in order to effectuate that for this year, council might have. They might have to use a reserve if you want to do it after budget, after, uh, mill rate has been established. Then you can't go back and, and get it from. Tax levy, so.
And in exactly on that line is think, thinking the exact same thing. How do we do it when we're adding water in and you're at, you know, making a few changes? And when I did my scenarios to make that all work, um, I think it was a three. Wasn't like, you know, two and a half percent on res and, uh, deduction on res. And I thought. In this year, in the amount that we have impacted this assessment. For me, I'm okay with pulling something from reserves for this situation, um. Cause it, it is going to be quite a shock, I think, for a few people who aren't aware of it yet.
Madam Chair, uh, there was that duplicate entry of a hundred and sixty thousand. So that will be reducing so scenario to, to even if you go by it and not change anything else, it will not be a reserve withdrawal. It would be a contribution to reserve for. Sixty-five thousand.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Counsel Cromwell.
Thank you. I completely agree, Madam Reeve. The impact to our rate pairs to our residents, uh, cannot be measured. By us talking in this room alone. And we are putting, we're putting a good amount of money into reserve and I completely support scenario two. Uh, this is the only option that really makes sense of how can we show and be a community and a council that cared for a repair? So definitely my support on that.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who, Counsel Wallack?
So, um, we just saw a bridge presentation that we need. A lot of money for in the next ten years. I can't. Um, I'm not okay with going into reserves. I think we should be putting more into reserves because this is just going to continue to be a future problem. We can't just say, oh, it's because the economy is bad. We're gonna, we're gonna hurt the next generation if we don't put away, just like they did to us. Um, so I, I'm not okay dipping into reserves. Um, also just going back to that three point five million dollar surplus, is that factored in the tax rate? With this like mill rate?
Pardon me?
The, the three point five million surplus that you're predicting?
Uh, no, uh, from surplus tw- from twenty-four?
Yeah, well, yeah. So like, we're gonna need it again this year. Are we not?
Are we? I'm sorry, I don't understand your question. Are we budgeting for it again this year? No, we're not.
Okay.
Um, if we're, if we're budgeting for a zero. Budget, balanced budget, we're not budgeting for a surplus. So some of the scenarios on page. Sixty-three, you could see, um. The various scenarios on one page, some of them do budget a surplus. Um, so, uh, scenario one and two, it's, it's very close to being balanced. Um, but, uh, scenario three and four, we would be budgeting a surplus. So if you're asking about the twenty-four surplus, no, that's, it won't affect this year's budget. Cause it's going to be dedicated to reserve for, uh, assessment appeal contingency. So we're not rolling it into this year's budget to spend it. Unless we lose a tax appeal and then we'll be spending it. But it would come from reserves.
Okay. Okay, I'm just, I don't want to get us in the situation again where we are today in ten years. For the next council, like, we need to be budgeting for a lot of money for infrastructure. And I don't think it's okay for us to be dipping into reserves. For, for operating now.
And I, I totally understand, um, where you're coming from. I totally get it. But I sit back and I look at it in a situation where I don't think any of us expected what was going to happen with this assessment. Um, I mean, we, there's a lot that went on there. We can't fix it all in one year. But we have, for me personally, we have to ease into some of these things as well. And for right now, assessment is where we need to ease, ease. Some of the burden and, uh, we are definitely being proactive in placing, uh, funds into reserves. There's no shortage. Of that happening. Um. It's not like we're not putting anything in. We have a, on the summary is three million, one hundred three thousand, eight hundred and forty-two that we've, um. Allocated as well. So. For me, I'm not, we're, we're definitely, we have to balance it for me in my mind that we're doing, helping our residents as well as. As looking after our infrastructure. I think we're doing both with the, uh, scenario two.
Sorry, I just don't see any, like, there's no road construction reserves going in. There's no bridge reserves, so. That's where my concern is.
I, uh. I don't know if everybody has actually sat down and really figured out assessments. And what is happening out there? But if you haven't, I suggest you do it. And understand because your phone is going to ring off the wall. When people start getting their tax notices, a lot of people don't understand. Uh, they understand it when their tax notices come out. And look out. I'm just telling you that right now. Look out. Because. What we may have thought was. Was a, was a good way to go. I'm telling you, there's going to be some, uh, hurting people out there. So. I think if we can, uh. Get through this budget and everything. And see where we're lying, that's. But I would suggest everybody figure out this tax notice stuff, this tax assessment stuff. Prior to tax noticing going out.
Go ahead, please. Um, I'm also for scenario two. And yeah, when it comes down to the tax assessments, it's going to be. Very, very alarming. I know I've already had some phone calls that, uh, definitely from June on, I'm expecting my phone to be very busy. Um. A hundred percent, but scenario two with that a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, good catch on that. It's that fast and much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you. Mister Gerlock.
Wondering why farmland taxes are zero. When. If, if I was a residential taxpayer, it's the first thing I would look at and say. I want what they got. When that move has been like zero, just. Doesn't fly as far as I can see.
I'll say thank you.
It's that.
Um, when you sit back and we were given, or I guess we didn't get it all handed out, but, um. When you look at all of the different mill, mill rates from our neighboring communities. We're sitting at a point one four, um. Of our farmland, uh, mill rate. And when you do an average of our neighboring bordering who border us, the six, six municipalities. The average is point one two. So we're not totally out to lunch. I also took, took into consideration the assessments of each one of those taxable assessments of each one of those. Um, which of course, when you look at it. You can understand why some of those farm rates are way higher because their assessment is way, their taxable assessment is way lower. And so they have to, of course, find where they're going to earn that revenue to be able to continue their operating in their capital. So. For me, uh, in this particular situation and in this particular year. With the, with the such a drastic change in our assessment. I'm not. In favor of going over the fi- increasing farmland at this point, Counsel Anderson.
Thanks. Um, something that I don't want to. Not, I, I want to recognize is that we are paying approximately two point five million dollars. Out of taxation for bridge projects this year. In this budget. That where, I mean, it could be balanced with a five percent reduction to residential taxes. That includes two point five million dollars on bridge spending and. If we can do that, that's incredible, incredible to do, be able to do that and. Hoping that if we keep that budget line in there, next year we'll be able to apply for more STIP funding and that money will get us further. Um, I do think that's a step in the right direction for getting ahead of our bridge. Situation. And. So for that reason alone, because we're paying for that out of taxation, as long as we have a balanced. Budget, I'm absolutely in favor of scenario two. Um. Because I think that's, that is significant right there.
Thank you very much. I totally agree. Counsel Cromwell, just don't want to forget you up there.
No, you know where my brain is.
Careful. Right, um. Anybody else have anything? Pardon me, this was a discussion, uh, point today. Um, by the sounds of it, it looks like we have a consensus on the, the scenario two for administration. Um, do we need to do a, a poll on that or is everyone satisfied majority is scenario two? By a bunch. I think scenario two is looking like the one way to go for the, um, the mill rate, if that's helpful for administration. Yep, it's. It, the scenario two would be five percent reduction on residential, zero, uh, change on farmland. And four to one ratio for non-res. Okay, I think that's. Are we about done, folks? Is there anything else anybody would like? Oh, we have to discuss five point two. The five point two is the received for information is for Counsel Wallack motion. But we're first, we'll talk about five point one, we'll, we'll start that one, we'll finish five point one off. So I, I don't know if we need a, a motion, yes, from council at this point. Regarding the mill rate. Maybe we should. Okay. Okay, that sounds good. So is anybody like to own?
Motion to direct administration to draft. The taxation by law for the next. County council meeting utilizing scenario two.
Thank you.
As discussed, so with.
Okay, thank you. I think Ms. Blair has that. All right. Is there any discussion? We'll go to the question. All those in favor?
Bye.
Awesome. Doesn't appear there's any opposed, so that would be seven and oh. Okay. So I believe that wraps up five point one, everybody. Do we need to make any motion actually with regards to the draft budget as amended? Do we need anything? To clarify that?
Uh, no, Mad Chair, um, we'll just, we'll address all the questions that we heard. We wrote them all down, minor adjustment here and there. And we'll bring it back for final at next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you all very much. It's a huge job and well done. It's very much appreciated. I think this is an excellent budget. So we look forward to, uh, looking at the final, final draft. Next time around. All right. So we can move on now to five point two. And Counsel Chat, uh, Counsel Wallack, pardon me, would like to receive, uh, the MPA presentation as information. And we have a, we have a comment.
Uh, yeah, I just wanna, uh, thank you, Director, uh, Morton for. And admin, all administration for that report. It's, uh, very informing on, on our bridges and everything. And it's, and it actually was a very good report. It, it was, uh, understanding and all that. So. Good to see you guys for bringing that forward and a better understanding on. What kind of situation we are in the bridges. But they're under good house. Okay. Thank you.
Awesome. And with that, um, if we're ready for the question to receive the information, all those in favor? Mister Cromwell. Good to go. All right, that's seven and oh. And I believe we can officially adjourn today's meeting at two, four, five.